Hello, everyone. For everyone who might be here for our PCR 52-25 resolution requesting the General Assembly to support constitutional rights to bear arms and oppose the Rhode Island Assault Weapons Ban Act of 2025, H 5346 and S 359. My understanding is that currently this request to hold that, that will be handled in committee, and we will hear it presumably at our next meeting on June 2. This is at the request of the legislature because they are actively in the process of changing that legislation. Like as we speak, multiple legislators, members of legislature have reached out, not to mention people who are actively working on the bill. So, we want to make sure we're actually able to vote on a resolution that addresses the bill in its comprehensive final form as opposed to something that's going to be changed drastically. So, if you're wondering why it's being held, that's why. You're more than welcome to connect with your councilpeople or, more importantly, your legislature because they're the ones who are actively working on the bill as we speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is now 5:08, and the City Council Finance Committee has been called order. Hello, everyone. I need to call for order in the chamber, please. I need a motion for the minutes of April 21.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And also, I just want to announce that Councilman Muto is unable to join us this evening due to illness. I also need to meet, oh no, I'm sorry, that's public safety. Be with me for one moment, please. Okay, first item on the bid package is bid number 2025-419 Food Truck Services.
Good evening, Bill Fasenti, Chief Staff, Mayor Pacozzi. Poxon Rec. Director Wiley is not able to attend this evening, so I'll be presenting bid 2025-419 on her behalf. Poxon Recreation is asking the City of Warwick Council to award a revenue bid to Ocean State Concessions LLC to provide food trucks services to 13 predetermined, pre-scheduled, city-sponsored events. Poxon Recreation, along with the Purchasing Department, Purchasing Division, went out to bid for contract services for food truck services for various city events. There are two agencies or organizations in the city, in the state, that provide multiple food trucks. We received, we reached out to both of them as well as advertising it on various city websites. I mean, various websites, purchasing, state purchasing, City of Warwick, and I believe a couple others. We received one bid from Ocean State Concessions. Just so you can, there are 13 events that the city is asking for approval for this evening. Each one of them had a minimum bid from the prospective vendor. Ocean State Concessions bid at the minimum or in excess of the minimum for all but two of the food truck events. And with the revenue anticipated from Ocean State Concessions, it is estimated the city will collect $8,260. In years past, the food truck events were coordinated by the city. Last year, we received $4,350 in revenue. The year before was $1,920, and in 2022, $5,423. So, you can see that by awarding to Ocean State Concessions, the city will be receiving $8,260 versus last year's $4,350. Like I said, we received one bid. The other food truck organization did not bid. Just for clarification, this does not preclude any food truck from driving through any of the city parks on any other day and selling their food or concession.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, as you know, I've had concerns about this, this food truck issue for quite some time. We actually had a meeting back in June of last year, and I had addressed and made known all my concerns that I was having with that. What prompted the city to change and go to what we're looking at today?
So, the city has never bid out food trucks for events specific. We have bid out concession services at certain city parks, Oakland Beach Seawall, City Park. That bid, we don't, haven't done, that's not, that's separate and apart from this. Historically, the last year or so, and forgive me, I wasn't here during last year, but what we've done is, we've had an agreement with one of the food truck providers to bring food trucks to our events. As you know, food trucks are very popular. The city Poxon Recreation Department does not have the staff to solicit, and nor do we have the ability to solicit 10 to 12 food trucks for 13 different events. And so, what we did was, we had a food truck provider come. The food trucks that came were required to donate 10% of their collections for that evening. What happened was, that was paid in cash, which we don't like to have city employees handling cash. There was no way to verify the 10% was accurately given, calculated. We've had food trucks leave early before the person collecting the revenue came by. So, that, what prompted it was your discussions and other councilpeople's discussions on making this more of a uniform, non-subjective process. And the administration felt this was the best way to do it. We consulted with various other cities and towns in the state, and we, this is an issue for many cities and towns, that their food trucks are, they're everywhere. People don't have the manpower in the cities and towns to schedule 10 to 12 food trucks. This is the first year we doing this, and I ask that we are given a one-year trial to see how it works. As I said, this does not preclude any food truck from going to any of the other city facilities, any of the other days, there are 13 days in the season that we're having events at. Does not preclude them from getting flagged down and selling whatever they want.
Well, Chief, I'm still not comfortable with this for actually a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is that in the bid, it doesn't provide a preference to Warwick vendors. And I think that's a disservice to the Warwick vendors, the folks that live here in the City of Warwick and operate their businesses out in the City of Warwick, which is one of the reasons why some time ago, we had passed the resolution that, or an ordinance, that local vendors could receive a 7% variance.
It was 5%.
I believe it was 7 with sales tax.
Okay.
The amount, but either way.
Yeah.
In addition to that, there are concerns with the revenue that we may receive or will receive under this bid process compared to what we did years ago when vendor would bid on certain locations and certain positions, if you will, for these food truck venues. The bid itself has some variances in it, which admittedly, I just noticed today, going through it again, on page eight of the bid request, it states that holiday tree lighting, holiday stroll, and non-special events have a minimum bid request of $750. But yet, the sole bidder bid $515. And then, when I look at it further, on page 12, it says something different. It says holiday tree lighting, holiday stroll, $375 per event minimum. So, these type of discrepancies concern me. I also reached out to one of the other vendors, let's say, and asked why they didn't bid. And I want to read a few of these things into the record as to why they didn't bid. Unclear responsibilities amongst stakeholders. The RFP doesn't clearly define what the city, the organizer, and the individual food trucks are each responsible for at these events. Without clarity on the roles, such as who manages event logistics, oversees compliance, handles public inquiries, coordinates onsite issues, et cetera, it's very difficult to ensure a professional execution. There's no defined metrics for success. What could anyone expect to get out of this? There's no indication of how in the event's success will be measured or evaluated. Fee structures, fee structure places at high risk are organized on organizer or vendors. The minimum bid fee are significant, but without attendance estimates, no sales are guaranteed. These are all reasons why people didn't bid, because these things are not inclusive in that. Lack of details of the events themselves, no provisions ensuring fair treatment of food trucks. The RFP doesn't include protection for the food trucks themselves, such as equitable placement, caps on participation fees, or a process for resolving dispute grievances. The other, and there's, there's a lot more to it, but the point is, there's, there's reasons why people didn't bid on this particular issue. The other concern that I have is on page six, and I will be moving an amendment on that. It says, "Prices to be held firm for one year, January 1, '25 through May 31, '26. Terms and contracts may be extended for one additional term upon mutual agreement unless otherwise stated." I would object to that language, and I would recommend that at the end of this contract, given the concerns that have been presented by at least one of the other vendors, as well as other folks, I would like to have this revisited next year with any suggestions, changes, amendments, and reconsidered before the City Council as opposed to just renewing this automatically. Would you have an objection to that?
No, I don't have an objection to revisiting it. Like I said, I would like at least one year to see how this works. And to answer some of your questions before, if you look on page, page 14 of the bid, there is a sample food truck vendor agreement that spells out all the rules and responsibilities and who's responsible for what during the event.
On what page, what page, Chief?
Page 14.
Okay.
14, 15, and 16. And also, there were two addendums issued for this, one a three-page addendum and one a two-page addendum. And unfortunately, whatever vendor asked those questions of, or told you what their concerns were, most of those were not raised in the, in the information request period. So, they had the right to reach out during the bidding process, and they hadn't. We did receive numerous calls from other food truck providers, and all the answers to the questions were addressed in the two addendums.
With respect to Ocean State Concessions, is there more than one person or companies involved in Ocean State Concessions?
Ocean State Concessions is a business that's owned by an individual. They do have additional food trucks, if that's what you're asking. They do have food trucks, and they are Warwick-based business as well. They have three or four businesses in Warwick.
That make up this Ocean State Concessions?
Yeah, so they submitted a list of 15 different food trucks that are potential vendors or to be participating in the events as requested, and I'd say six, five or six, quick math of the 15 are Warwick businesses, then there's Cranston and West Warwick, and he also represents 65 other food trucks. As I said, this was open in public to be bid on. We received one bid.
Okay. Any questions from members of the committee? Councilman Foley.
A, a number of local vendors reached out to me also, and just to clarify, as Councilman Lattes has stated, that provision about rollover, you're, you're okay with amending?
So that, so I, I mean, I would ask the City Council Solicitor to weigh in on amending the bid that was what they were bidding on as far as dates of expiration and starting. So, you'd have to get an advisory opinion from the Solicitor, but the administration doesn't have a problem with it.
Solicitor?
I'm sorry, I was on a sidebar. Could, could we repeat the question?
So, in the bid, Solicitor, there is a term to expire on page, page is it on?
So, on page six, where you see my notation over there.
Okay. So, the purchasing agent just mentioned that this is only if we agree to it. It's not automatic, so we could make that change.
But I would prefer to see it changed right now.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Most likely can.
So, my request is to make an amendment on that so that this doesn't, we just renew without coming back to the City Council. The administration is asked to try this for a year and see how, see if it works, how it works. What I'm saying is, after the end of that first year, yeah, we all want to see how it works or didn't work, and to be brought back before the City Council for approval or go back out for a whole new bid altogether, preferably just go back out for a whole new bid.
It appears that the-
But not just automatically allow it.
If the, what you've put in front of me is what, it appears that the price to be held firm for one year, term contracts may be extended for one additional term upon mutual agreement unless otherwise stated. So, that, we would ultimately have to agree to any extension. There's no automatic extension.
When it says mutually agreed, does it define between the administration and the vendor and the council? I don't think so. I'd just like to have that-
I believe it would have to go, come back to the council for award.
It would follow our, our purchasing regulations, which means that they would come to us to say, we'd like to execute, that the vendor is agreeable, and they would ask for our permission to enter into that extension. So, under the, the terms here, it would come back to the council if the vendor wanted it to. If the vendor didn't, then we're back out to bid. If the vendor wants to and the city would like to, that contract would then be approvable by this body.
What happens if the council doesn't want to renew it?
Then we go back out to bid.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry. No problem. So, basically, you're staying because of the policy and procedure that we have on the bids, that it's de facto would have to come back to us. Even if the administration and the vendor agreed to renew it, they would have to come back to us to get our approval.
So, the, the council cannot dictate the terms of retroactive what the bid says. So, we, they went out to bid, they sought what they sought, they got responses. Our, our action is whether we approve or disapprove of, of that. We can't retroactively change the terms of that. The provisions that are within the bid specs say that there is an option to renew for one year upon mutual agreement of the parties. So, that means we would have to agree. We, meaning the council, would have to agree, along with the vendor, to proceed with a, an extension.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Any questions, Councilman Napa? Comments?
Just one question, Chief. When is the, when is the first event? Just so I can clarify.
First event is June 20, I think it's June 20, July 20, July 9.
July 9.
And most, just so you know, most of these food trucks book months or years in advance, and there are competing events. This has been, was awarded, was received, but the director has been out of the office, so that's why I'm presenting it this evening. So, timing is to, to line up the food trucks for our events to make sure they're successful. This would need to be, action would need to be had tonight.
Right. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, actually, there was one other concern I had, and that's where the vendor, Ocean State Concessions, will be the ones solely assigning the food trucks to these different city events, and they will also be the ones assigning the locations. So, whether they're at, you know, the front of the line or the back of the line, I have a concern with that. And I think that it's unfair to all the vendors that that decision and that discretion is afforded to the, it happens to be the vendor this particular time of Ocean State. I think that's unfair. I think what would be fair, or fairer, and make sense, is that the vendor, in this case, Ocean State Concessions, would provide the administration with a recommended list of food truck vendors and location assignments to be approved by the administration as opposed to just giving full carte blanche authority to the vendor to make these assignments, particularly when the, the vendor has a fair amount of vehicles associated within their own organization.
So, the vendor is bearing the cost of the fees to, to secure these events, and it's at his, their discretion to assign the locations to food trucks that have expressed interest in going to the events. The city and the administration instructs where the vendor can and cannot set up, and the restrictions on that in accordance with the vendor agreement, but the discretion of which food trucks go to which event is solely on the vendor, who's bearing the cost of the, the permits, if you will, the fee, and giving the city the revenue. It's, it's at his discretion or their discretion. Again, this can be revisited, you know, you know, this is our first time doing this, and with all bids, someone's going to be happy, someone's going to be mad. Since we received one bid, I mean, I can't, I don't-
Any other members of the council have any questions? Councilman Ricks?
So, to clarify, at these same locations, any days other than the days specified, any food truck, ice cream truck, lemonade truck, what have you, would be allowed to sell on city property?
As long as they have their proper licenses and everything other than a permit. We don't, we're not permitting Oakland Beach Seawall, we're not permitting Canemica Point, we're not permitting City Park. What we are doing is restricting the food truck from stopping at those locations and parking for the day, and then waiting for people to come. But if they're being flagged down, they are allowed to sell until there's no one else in line, and then they drive through. They can drive through all day long on any other days except for the 13 that we have listed. And just for the clarification, we were bidding out various locations for ice cream, lemonade, before food trucks became a thing, and what was happening is, we bid it out to one particular vendor, that vendor would not show up. We can't put anyone else in that spot. The vendor would leave early, can't put anyone else in the spot. So, this ability to drive through is open to everyone. As you know, there are some of our beaches that have parking fees, Canemica and Oakland Beach. That's why they can't park at those locations.
Okay. Is there, is there any plan, like in previous years, to bid out those different locations or just?
We're going to see how this goes first.
Okay. So, that would be a plan for potentially next year, depending on how it goes this year?
Potentially.
Okay. How is it determined the minimum bidding amount on this year's bids?
It was just the, the department felt that that was, was based on prior, I believe it was averages of prior event revenue. We felt that was the, the way to go. We have revenue data, or I have revenue data tonight, all the way back to 2021. Historically, Rocky Point brings in about $1,000, $1,300. Some nights, it brings in $1,800, some events. So, it's just a, an average, what we thought was fair. And again, this is the first time we're doing this. If next year we find the fees are too low, too high, depending on feedback, we'll change the way we bid it out.
But with Rocky Point and previous years, when we're talking amounts of, and I think that I have the same data in front of me, when we're talking those amounts of $1,400 more or less, some years a little more, some years less.
Right. Right.
But, uh, that's per event, whereas, uh, one of these would be the minimum bid of fifteen hundred for four different events at Rocky Point?
Right. So it's, yes. But you've got to look at what event it was. So if it was a, um, a fireworks display, if it was a movie night, because we have specific events at Rocky Point that they bid, um, specifically, um, New Year's Eve, that minimum bid was fifteen hundred. And Rocky Point events, the four events at Rocky Point was a minimum bid of fifteen hundred. He bid fifteen, five fifty-five per event, which is twenty-two hundred. So. So again, we'll, we can revisit this next year.
Okay. I suppose just, uh, on the record, where I always have a little bit of hesitation on something like this, where only one bidder steps up, something of this, uh, type of scope, I'm not sure how many potential, uh, bidders there would be who would be able to organize to. Yeah. So I'm, I'm glad that, uh, there's a willingness to reexamine this potentially in the future. No further questions. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments from members of the council?
I do.
Council president?
Yeah. So it's more just a request based on what I've heard, because I have spoken to at least one person on this and I've been around a surprising amount of time. So I, I remember when we did this differently. So I'm confused on some of the revenue numbers, but I can ask outside the meeting on that because I get it that we're doing a trial run here, but I do have some stuff I want to drill into. So just a heads up.
Are there any, any questions from members of the public? Any questions, comments from the member of the public? Come forward, please. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Rick Leandre. I have a bunch of questions regarding about this, um, bid. I'm totally against it.
Just speak directly to my-
Totally against this, uh, bid right now. I have, um, I feel like this process is unfair. How it goes is you have to pay for a city license and then you have to pay an association fee and then you're not, or you might be allowed to go to Warwick City events only through the association. So the city council or the bid process has no restrictions on that. So being a food truck person that been doing this for eight years, it just takes the mom and pop or the store that's been Warwick-based for many years. I have questions regarding about why did this bid go out? Chief?
Partially because the city council had questions as to how we were awarding the bid or how we were handling food trucks.
It seems like you mentioned a lot about revenue. Um, you mentioned also regarding about bidding process. Years ago, they did bid out, uh, those five locations and it did generate a lot of revenue. Last year they didn't do it and this year you didn't do it. I don't know the exact numbers, but I knew it used to be thirty to sixty thousand dollars a season. You did not do that last year and you're not doing it this year.
Correct. Those, those are not events. Those are locations.
No, we're talking about two, you mentioned generation of revenue. That would make the, um, a lot of New England Lemonade and a lot of other venues that could bid on this. And you stated that you're not doing it this year. The reason why is-
We haven't gotten to that part of the bid yet, because a lot of times when the vendor was awarded the contract, they would leave early, they wouldn't show up. So whether they, I don't know the exact dollar amounts, I wasn't involved in the bid process. I think thirty to sixty thousand dollars is high on that. Um, I can get those numbers, uh, but that's the next step. And again, as I mentioned, nothing in this bid precludes any vendor, food truck, from driving through Oakland Beach, Canemica, City Park, Saltus Grove, Rocky Point, on any of the other days, even the days of the event, up until the event, they can drive through and sell.
Regards to this bid process, you have, you said there's two associations in the city and you only got one bid and it was who again?
Ocean State Concessions.
And who ran it last year?
Ocean State Concessions had a, we had an agreement with Ocean State Concessions to just provide the food truck. There was no money changing hands to Ocean State Concessions. They just acted as the conduit because we needed food trucks at events. And then the vendor that, um, went to the event, the food truck, provided the city with ten percent of their revenue from that evening. As I mentioned, sometimes they left early and provided nothing. Some of them, um, were less than truthful. The other issue that some of the council members had was that the, um, the members of the city staff were dealing in cash and walking around collecting cash from an event and then coming back to their office with cash is, is not a best practice.
You mentioned some of the figures that I don't have in front of me, um, somewhere a thousand dollars. Do you have the number of food trucks that went to these events that collected that amount of money and what they gave?
Uh, the specific food trucks and the specific amount-
Well, you said there was, like you mentioned, National Night Out made eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't have the specific which food trucks they were and how much each food truck gave.
Okay.
So I just have the total revenue collected.
Could you get that?
Probably.
Okay. Um, I, I just feel it's an unfair process because you have a lot of Warwick-based food trucks in Warwick that it just eliminates us through the whole process because we're not an association. I thought it was food trucks association, not concessions. Is concessions, Ocean State Concessions is based in Warwick or another city and town?
They're based out of their businesses, um, business address is Cranston and they own Warwick-based businesses.
Okay. Um, it, it's just a very hard process because you have to pay a license in the city, then you have to pay an association fee and you're still not guaranteed any bids in Warwick. And there are a lot of vendors in Warwick that feel like that's not a fair process.
I, I understand. And again, this is our first time bidding it out, so we're just looking for a one-year-
Right, but you did that process last year with Ocean State Food Trucks.
Right. And last year-
And it was not bid it out as awarded.
Correct. It wasn't awarded. It was just an agreement that they would provide the food trucks. And they were instructed that they could not turn away any food truck that showed up for that event, even if they weren't a member. So the problem we have is that there are food truck wars, it's a popular TV show, and there are members of each organization that fight amongst themselves. And then it kind of hampers what cities and towns and other food trucks can do that are not members. They get penalized for not going to one event versus another. Um, and unfortunately, this is the world we live in, food trucks are popular. Um, this is the best we, best process we have right now. We're going to evaluate it at the end of the, the term and make a decision on how we handle it going forward.
And you're agreed upon that the, uh, vendor can pick the own trucks that go to these events?
That is, that was one of the questions that was provided in the addendum and they can do that, yes.
And prior to these two years, how did the city run these events through the city?
Who ran the events? The Poxer Recreation Department reached out to, honestly, I don't believe we had many events that had food trucks. Some of our sponsor organizations, the Central Island Chamber of Commerce, may have scheduled the food trucks just by cold calling them. We may have done that as well, um, but that's not a fair process either. Some people might like ice cream versus lemonade, some people might, hot dogs versus hamburgers. Everything is, is subjective and there's going to be winners and losers. Um, this is the process that the administration chose and we're just asking for a one-year, uh, one-year trial.
On National Night Out, the funds that you collect through this bid process, does it go to the city? Is it awarded to the police department on certain nights?
Oh, goes to the city.
All to the city. Okay. I have no more further questions.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments, questions, concerns from members of the public? Please come forward, sir. State your name for the record, please, and speak right into-
Robert Lombardi, owner of New England Lemonade, based in Warwick, forty years. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So talk about revenue. My company was built, we have a storefront on Oakland Beach Avenue. My late father opened that store. We have a sixty-year company in the state. My father was a lifelong resident. I was brought up in Warwick, the school systems, opened that store, had the trucks in Warwick, licensed through the city. Talk about revenue. My last year that we did the RFP for lemonade only, I gave this city eighteen thousand dollars for five venues. We bid fair, there was lemonade only. We built our business that way. The last three or four years, there was no RFP for the five locations I talk of. The waterfront, City Park, Mickey Stevens, Canemica Point, Rocky Point. We put forth a bid on every location every year. Okay. He talks about eight thousand dollars? Can you imagine? I'm a Warwick company that built my business according to the RFPs put forth by the committee or whoever, purchasing agents for years. I, I hand-delivered that bid for twenty consecutive years, me personally. We got shut out from that waterfront. We were there before RFPs, before RFPs. So you tell me that I can't go to National Night Out. I sat in this building with the mayor, giving him insight on this process. Okay? I've dealt with every municipality in the state. Currently Providence, I have various contracts. I dealt, I can tell you a lot of stories about how to make it work. This is a monopoly. The reason why you have one bid, do you have on record the, uh, second food truck organization? I talked to him today. He has on record why he did not bid. Did you go over that, sir?
I read some of those comments into the record earlier.
Yes, and he knows why. And we know why there was only one bid. This is a monopoly. This is as wrong as it gets. Oh, we're going to try it out? We've been trying it out. We've been paying taxes. My father lived eighty-three years in this city, paid taxes his whole life, donated to every organization in this city. We built our business donating money to the youth sports programs, every one of them, and we still do it. We, my, my son, who just graduated from Bryant University, he is fed up. He, he can't even believe this, the city has done in his three years working with the company. He doesn't even want to come to Warwick. Okay? He's disgusted. And as wrong as it gets, eighteen thousand five hundred was my last venue to this city and I can't even go to National Night Out? I can't go to the fireworks? You're telling me we can't come here? I paid taxes on all my properties in Warwick. Okay? What happened to the purchasing agent, recreation director? You put the RFPs out? I understand about the food trucks. Believe me, I do. And I deal with it in other municipalities. You know what they do? They have their events and they tell the food truck guy, hey, by the way, our local vendors that have been licensed in this city for years are going to be there also. So you can have your lineup over there, but we're going to have a few locations for these vendors that have been here for numerous years. In my case, forty, forty, forty years. Frustrating to come here and listen to these stories about, this was one bid. There's a reason why it's one bid. I'll say it again. It was unfair, very unfair. There's a lot more to it and there's certain people in this room that know about it. I can go on and on, but I will, I will tell you right now, I have called recreation, I have talked to purchasing. Where's the RFP for the lemon? We had our own category. Lemonade was, you know how it is in Rhode Island, right? We had our own category. We had the waterfront. We were told no subletting. What are they doing, basically? You're letting them do the job of people in Warwick that are getting paid for their positions and you're letting this guy come in and he's going to pick and choose who gets the locations as you referred to? That's the truth of it. He owns four or five of those trucks. He's creating a monopoly, okay? In front of your, right in front of you. What more can I tell you? But it's, it's so frustrating, it's as wrong as it can get, that a Warwick company, I was brought up in the school system here, youth sports, my siblings, the family, for years, my father, eighty-three years in this city. He passed away in October, okay? He fought for Warwick. Every step, every administration supported, whatever. And to watch this happen, he said eight thousand dollars? I paid eighteen thousand five hundred for lemonade. You could have said, we're going to put hot dogs in, we're going to put doughboys in, we're going to bring french fries. That's fine with me, but no. I'm out, I'm not, I can't even come. I got my storefront on Oakland Beach Avenue, he's telling me I can drive through the waterfront. I was a fixture on that waterfront, a fixture. And every RFP I put forth, we sharpened our pencil every year, eighteen thousand five hundred, okay? And I can go on and on if you like me to. Very frustrating and it's as wrong as it gets here, that we can't operate in the city. So I should leave the city? Is that what you, you want me to do? Close my storefront? The taxes I've paid in this town are staggering and that's fine. It's the way it goes. I'm a licensed vendor and I can't go to these events in my own little city? It's terrible. So you guys all have the right points, but no one's doing anything about it. This is a monopoly and the gentleman that did not put his bid in, he knew better, as he told me today. He called me, he called me three times prior to this meeting, three times. And it's very frustrating for me to get up here and talk, okay? But I can, I can tell you a lot more stories about what's happened in this, in this little, with all this RFP stuff, okay? But it's a shame, actually. Any, any questions from anybody?
I don't have any questions, sir, but I, I will say, um, I concur with the majority, if not all, of your comments.
Well, I appreciate that.
And I put my two cents in earlier. Chief, any, um, questions or comments on the positions that this gentleman has taken or stated?
I can't come to the, I can't come to the events, but you're going to let, out of towners come prancing in.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Let him answer my question, please.
So the, the value, the revenue that he mentioned was for the five sites for the entire season.
Mm-hmm.
So this is for thirteen events. That's it. The rest of the season, he can drive through all of them without paying a fee. This is how the administration chose to do it, with seven to ten, seven to twelve food trucks at each event. I understand there are some people that are upset about it, um, but this is how the bid was presented and this is how the bid is being asked to be awarded. And the, the Ocean State Concessions has a storefront, Rixon Mortar, in Warwick. So he's also a Warwick business owner.
Well, chief, as I said before, I disagree with, with this whole process and I've disagreed with it from a year ago. I sympathize with, um, the Warwick vendors who are being restricted. To say that they can stop and go, that's not, that's not a position that I'll support. They can stop and go? So this guy's been here forty years, he's been paying taxes, other vendors in this city have been paying taxes and they can stop and go because one entity is controlling everything from the vendors to the locations? Doesn't make sense to me. Um, so do you have, is, does this gentleman still have a little bit of time left, sir?
Mr. Ricks had a question for me.
Sir, do you have, do you have any other questions or any other comments?
No, I just want to know that we built our business according to what the town, what the city told us to do over the years.
Understood.
He talks about the revenue, that was for lemonade only. Again, I welcome any other entities that come there. If you said we're going to put hot dogs, we could never sublet. I had people always asking me, I paid ten thousand dollars for the waterfront. That's right, ten thou- ninety, nine thousand five hundred. People would call me, Bob, can I bring my hot dog cart down there? No, I can't do that. Never, never. We were there all day long, nobody grinded more than we did. My dad was, he cracked the whip, okay? We were there from morning till night, okay?
Sir, Councilman Ricks, you had a question?
Thank you. Yes, a question-
Yes, a question for the, the administration on this one. I do recall in previous years that different food categories had been bid out separately. Is there any reason in particular that the decision was made to put it all in one instead of leaving for separate food categories?
So again, this is for specific events to have food trucks. Years ago, I don't know how many years. Back in my youth, they were called something else. But food trucks have become popular and we have food truck specific events. Years ago, we bid out locations as Mr. Lombardi mentioned. Those were for ice cream or concessions, lemonade. This is not the same thing as Mr. Lombardi is talking about. We are going to work on a bid. It may not get done this year. But for next year, we will do a bid for concessions. This is for food trucks. For an organization to bring a variety of food trucks to city-sponsored events that people have asked for. They want to go to food truck events. They want to go to food truck events. They, they want this. And this is how the administration has chosen to do it.
Any other comments or questions from members of the public? Do we have any other comments or questions from members of the public? Did you have a, you offset, sir?
Just, yeah, it's just frustrating. He talks about one year trying this out. We've been doing this for 35 plus years. I have checked the purchasing department. At least 20 RFPs. And we, we asked three years ago, where's the RFP? What's happening? Why would this town, why would the city want to lose that revenue? My last year here, we paid $18,000, 18,500. And for the last three years, the city got zero. I don't know what they got last year from this, from this entity. But he just spoke of $8,000? I was only lemonade. Lemonade only. They could have still brought the food trucks in for the events. But you guys lost out on my, my money. I lost out on building my business, hiring kids that worked, high school kids and so forth. I don't even know which way I'm going. But they want to try it out. The administration wants to try it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I just had one question for you. And thank you, Mr. Lombardi, for your time. So I can say that I was amongst the children that were, were young people that were employed by your father back when. So I appreciate the hard work that your family has done for the community. Is, are these events strictly? Is there language in your bid package that I didn't notice it? Is it strictly for the food trucks or is there a carve-out? Is there a way for cities to allow vendors who do not sell food to also be included? Or do they have a license to preclude?
Food trucks is a general term. So it could be an ice cream truck. It could be a lemonade truck. It could be a falafel truck. It could be, it could be a coffee, coffee truck.
I think we can classify coffee and ice and lemonade differently than?
We didn't classify it in the bid. It was for food truck events.
Okay.
And to bring various food truck events, various food trucks to the city events. Sole discretion. So there's no carve-out to allow for another organi, another organization to go to the event without being part of Ocean State. In this case. It could be someone different next year. It could be a complete, it could be four of them. There's an organization in Vermont that expressed interest in food truck events here and they joined one of the organizations. I don't know which one it was.
Yeah. So I guess my question is more so that possibly one thing we need to do is clarify now that we have some more testimony from the community that the difference between a food truck and a, maybe a beverage truck or a food truck and some other sort of concession. I think food trucks provide a very different service than New England Frozen Lemonade or other beverage vendors.
I understand your concern, but this is how it was bid out and it wasn't specific in the bid. I don't think we can alter this bid by doing that.
Yeah. No, I think we're probably, we may be stuck with it at this point. I just want to be clear on the record that I think there needs to be.
Yeah, and again, this, I mean, we can, I know I've said it 100 times. We can reevaluate this to see what worked and what didn't work. To make it more appealing to other businesses in Warwick. Unfortunately, you know, for the, for the city staff to try to solicit bids from seven to 12 food truck or providers for every of, one of, one of the 13 events. So if you did 12 times 13, the City Parks and Recreation Office is two individuals. They work in the office.
I understand the constraints.
Yeah.
That's, that's not what I was trying to get put to light. Did, just to clarify something that Mr. Lombardi said. Did the city not do RFPs this year for season-long?
They did not.
Just chose not to examine that revenue stream?
Right now, we have chosen not to. Next year, we'll, again. Whether the, the organizations, the businesses accept it or not, they can come through and sell.
I, I'm just speaking strictly from the city side. I don't know if the vendors are cleared. They can go through whenever they'd like, but.
Yes. So we charge, we charge for parking in Oakland Beach and Canemica. So they can't park the vehicle other than for selling, active selling. There's no licensing fee, special permit fee from the city to be on Oakland Beach. Just their regular city license, the state inspections and their registrations.
For the city to lose out on that sort of revenue, I think is counterintuitive. But we can address that moving forward. Thank you, chief.
Welcome. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? Council President.
So again, for those who have come in since I announced it. If you're here for the resolution regarding the gun rights bill that's before the General Assembly. Please bear in mind that there's a request for that to be held. The legislature, specifically the General Assembly, has requested that we hold off on that until our first meeting in June. As they are actively in the process of amending it. And as you can imagine, at least from the perspective of the city council, or at least from my perspective. We want to make sure if we're going to actually weigh in on something, we weigh on, weigh in on the final comprehensive bill as opposed to what mounts to a, a first draft, which by the, those who are actively working on its own admission is not done and is being drastically changed as we speak. So again, there is currently a request for it to be held. If it is in fact held, our process and procedure is that we don't take testimony on it. So letting you all know.
All set, Mr. President? Okay, moving on. Item number two, 2026-018 Alpha, Fire Apparatus Repairs. Christie, if you could just hold one moment. Attention, please, attention, please. If you could all take any conversations that you want outside, please. Please take any of your conversations outside, to the, outside of the chamber. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Moving on. Again, please, quiet in the chamber. Thank you. Moving on, we're gonna move on to item 2026-018 Alpha, Fire Apparatus Repairs. Christie, apologize for the delay.
Thank you. Kristi Moretti, Public Works. Public Works is requesting to award the one bid received for fire apparatus repairs to OnScene LLC in the amount of $150,000 for a one-year period. June 8, 2025 to June 7, 2026. And I just want to point out that this next bid also falls under the same dollar amount cap that we are requesting.
To tell you the truth, I'm, I'm surprised this bid even came to us. Because we have no prices in this. On my documents right here, it says list price, nothing. Percentage off, 20%. Net price, nothing. We have no pricing. You know where I've been with this for a long time. I'm surprised that it's even come to us. The other problem I have with this, and you've heard me talk about this at length, is, and by the way, Christie, I'm not criticizing you or anything of that nature. I'm just going to the things that, you know, have, should be known by everybody. The other issues I have is the department is asking to add all of these people on who haven't bid. It's happened before, recently. And I've objected to that. And I still object to it because I think this is just simply encouraging companies to say, to heck with it, I'm not gonna bid. Because they gotta include me anyways. So I don't need to bid. I don't need to, you know, grind my pencil or any of this other stuff. There could be a whole lot of reasons. Maybe they're just too lazy to bid. Maybe they feel it's not worth going through the exercise to do it. Maybe they don't know. Maybe they're not aware. But what I do know is that I don't think, and I don't feel that we should continue to encourage this type of activity. Where all of these people, they can participate in the process, but they don't have to bid. And in this case, we have one entity who does bid, but we have no idea what the hell their price is. I can't support this. This, this makes like zero sense to me that we have no idea what this pricing is gonna be. So I'm gonna open it up for questions from my colleagues on the committee, on the council, and members of the public. And I'll reserve a follow-up comment after that. So any questions to, from members of the committee? Do we have any questions from members of the council? Are there any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Are there any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I'm gonna make a motion to send this back out for a rebid and present us with a bid that shows us what we're going to be paying for the 15 to 20 items that you most commonly use in these repairs. I am not going to support a blanket approval when I have no idea what the numbers are. And in addition to that, continue to support adding in vendors who don't want to bother with the bid process. Tasker Automotive, they've always bid. They've been bidding forever. Some of these other vendors I'm not so familiar with. But I'm not gonna be part of just, you know, rubber stamping this stuff and letting it go through. Sure. We need a PCR on this. I'm sorry, what was it? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
It seemed to my, to my rec, my idea that you combined A and B. So do you want two PCRs?
Yeah, I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. Yeah, because I, that, no, that's a very, very good point. And I think that's exactly what I'm going to request. So.
For clarification.
To the solicitor, do I need to hear these individually? Or, I mean, we're gonna apply a PCR number to each, right?
Separate PCR's if you're gonna ask for.
Okay. So right now, we have a PCR 5725 on 2026-018.
So I think we should go through the steps at least.
Correct, I will. Yep, thank you.
You will.
So moving on to 2026-018B.
Councilman, excuse me. I, I just would like to make a couple of comments if I can.
Oh, sure.
About these, about these two bids. I, I understand where you're coming from. And with all due respect, if we have to wait to put this back out to bid. I, I understand that, you know, had the vendor put in the list price with the discount and the net price, then that bid would have been acceptable to you. However, they did give us the information that we were looking for, which is the percentage off the, the parts for any given vehicle. Now, as far as the part B. There's, vendors don't work on the same brand, so to speak. So the reason we have the part B, the reason we have to add all these vendors is because the fire department does not have one standard brand of, of fire apparatus. So we have, the rescues are internationals. So they have to go to Coastal International if we have to send it out for repair. They have some E1 engines or ladders that have to go to Greenwood for repair because there's other vendors that don't work on E1s. So I just wanted to explain this to you so you could understand. And, and this bid expires on June 7th, the current bid that we have. So what's gonna happen is, the next meeting is not until June 5th. We are not gonna make it in time to go back out to bid and redo this whole process. This bid is going to expire. So what is gonna end up happening is that we're gonna send out fire apparatus if we need to get it fixed because we have to provide emergency services. And then, and then we will come back to council and we will ask for forgiveness instead of permission. Because we cannot leave our fire apparatus and our rescues sitting until we can get approval to have them fixed.
So Christie, that just aggravates me even more, to be perfectly honest with you. Because this is what happens whenever there's a problem with these bids. And either myself or someone else says, you gotta go back out for bid. And it's the same thing. Oh, we're not gonna have time. We're not gonna be able to pick up your trash. We're not gonna be able to plow your streets. We're not gonna have time. I'm not buying onto that anymore. I'm sorry, with all due respect, I'm not. Now, your department was well aware of the fact that this came in with no pricing. 20% of what? I'll bet you $1,000 right now, anyone in this room is not gonna go out and buy $150,000 worth of goods because a vendor says, oh, we're gonna give you a 20% discount, Ed. I don't think that's gonna happen. And I'm not going to go along with that happening to the taxpayers anymore. Sorry, not doing it. I will perhaps, and I'll defer to my colleagues. I perhaps will reconsider 2026-18B. That's a possibility. So right now, I wanna stick on 2026-018A. I'm not buying onto the excuse anymore that if you don't do it, we can't do this, we can't do that. It's not my fault. I didn't send this bid in with no prices. Sorry. Any other questions from members of the committee? Councilman Foley.
Christie, I, just for clarification for me. Are there repairs right now being done to fire apparatus that this $150,000 is going to pay for? Or is this, you're asking spending authority of up to $150,000 for repairs that might have to be made between now and June 7th?
So this is a new bid award that we are requesting. So this bid, this particular bid will start on June 8th of 2025 and run until June 7th of 2026. It is $150,000 collectively between A and B for spending authority. I, I can tell you right now that we spent, and, and just to give you an idea. Fiscal year '23, we spent $115,570.45. In fiscal year '24, we spent $55,181.83. In fiscal year '24, we spent $55,181.83. And in fiscal year '25, we spent to date $37,159.48. Now, with that being said, our mechanics are not certified to work on ladders, and they're not certified to work on pumps. So if we have an issue with any of those on any apparatus, it goes out for repair. We probably do, I'm going to say, 95% of the fire apparatus repairs in-house. We send it out when it's something that we cannot, we can't affect the repair on. So we're not, we're not saying that we're going to, you know, send out six vehicles on June 8 if this gets awarded. But it gives us the ability to make sure that, because we're responsible for the fire apparatus repairs, Public Works, we have the automotive garage, this is what we do. And if we need to send something out, we need to be able to do that to make sure that that vehicle is put back into service. The fire department only has so many reserves, and the fire department has had in the past had to borrow vehicles from other communities to make sure that they can meet the demand of the Warwick residents. And then, we have to, if we have possession of some, another community's vehicle, we have to fix it if something goes wrong. So that kind of adds insult to injury for us because now we're fixing someone else's vehicle.
So Kristi, with, with all that said, yeah, I agree. You're responsible. And you're also responsible to provide cost numbers so that the taxpayers know what they're paying for.
I agree with that. But I have to say, I'm sure the taxpayers would rather make sure that they have the response at their door when they need it.
Kristi, how much money do you have left in your budget right now for these repairs? How much you have left in that budget?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I want to say it's around $65,000.
$65,000. So it's almost 50% of what you're looking for in spending authority for a one-year contract.
Correct.
So you're still sitting on almost 50% of the allocation. So that's going to be a serious amount of repairs between now and June 1 or whatever the date was. So
We're not
The other thing is, the mayor can also issue a 3-3 for any type of emergency repairs. Councilman Napa?
So I think, I don't know where the disconnect is happening here, but it seems like, given that response that you just had, that we're somehow in opposition to fixing our fire trucks when need to be fixed. We have no problem approving the spending authority that you've had for the last several years or sending your trucks out to be fixed because the fire department certainly needs them, and we certainly want them to show up at people's doorsteps. So the harshness in your response to shed light on Councilman Lattister's valid concerns, and it makes it seem like he's in opposition to this resolution, I think are misplaced. The opposition is into how they come across as sloppy when they come and get submitted. If there is such a pressing need to get this done with time is of the essence, then perhaps it should have been proposed to the Finance Committee in prior meetings instead of waiting until there was one month left before it expired. That's all I have.
I have a question.
Council President, was that you?
Yep.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing makes sense. My only source of confusion is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the sole bidder, right? Am I crazy? There's only one bid?
Yes, there was only one bid submitted when the bid was advertised.
All right. Is there a universe where, had they submitted list prices, we would be saying no? It's an actual question. I don't, I don't know the answer for you.
So I'll, I'll take the question on that, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a possibility we could have. And there's a possibility we may have just go ahead and gone along with it. But right now, what you have is, you have something where this vendor could write their own price. And we're not going to have anything to say about it. They can come in on this sirene controller, 20% off, percentage off, what list price? This has been an issue for years. You need to know where you begin to know whether or not the price is good or whether the price is bad. You certainly need to know where you begin in order to know what the price is. To just blindly vote on something like this because due diligence wasn't conducted, there's nothing that I'm going to support.
No, that's all well and good. I'm not disagreeing with any of that. But I'd still want to hear the answer for my question from the administration because they're the ones who would be saying yes and no to the bids before it goes to us. And then I have a follow-up question as well. Oh, it's not a follow-up, it's just another question.
Chief, did you want to answer that?
So this OnScene LLC is a, is a mobile vendor. They come to the fire stations and fix various pieces of equipment. To the chairman's point of the balance in the account, one pieces, one pump or one pot of a fire truck could cost between $10,000 to $20,000. That truck has to be on the road. We can't hold a vendor's hand to the paper. I understand where you're coming from. We've had discussions on this. We can't make the vendor complete that line item. They're the, whether they put the list price or not, they gave us a price of 20% off. Kristi and the, the members of the Public Works Garage shop around. On the next one, you'll see various vendors. They don't just go with one vendor. They shop the prices around. If they can get it faster to get the truck back on the road, remember, these are fire trucks. They're not Public Works plow trucks in August. It's a life safety issue that I think we need to address and, you know, make sure that these trucks are on the road. To the council president's point, this is the only bidder that submitted a bid. Are there other vendors? They may, but they haven't chose to bid.
So my other question was, so let's say insanity happens and the list price for one of the parts that they say is going to be, it's going to be something outrageous. Well, this is stupid. $200,000 for a part. Obviously, that's not okay. Do we have the authority and ability to say, "No, we're not going to do that" if we accept this bid?
If it's a $200,000 pot, I mean, it's, I mean, if, if it's a, if it's a $5 light bulb and they're charging $200,000, yeah. No, they're, I mean, the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristi, but the, the Public Works Garage guys that are fixing these trucks, they can go in and look at pricing, some pricing.
So we don't, so we're not faced with a situation where they can gouge us
No.
at will, even if we accept the bid?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Right. There's, it's all monitored and evaluated. It's not just, you know, oh, he said it's, like you said, $200,000. Okay, do it. Unless that is an actual cost of the pot.
Right, unless that's fair market value, et cetera.
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I think that is bad business, with all due respect. It is bad business to just go with an open-end contract. To say that, well, you know, it's an emergency situation. As I said a minute ago, the mayor can do a 3-3 anytime it's deemed an emergency situation. However, to just go along with something that we don't have any, first of all, when you're submitting for these bids, this, the agreement was, well, it's not an ordinance, it was a resolution years ago when I was Finance Chair in '16 or whenever it was, that the bids would be sent out with a request of 15 to 20 most commonly used pots. Now, fire trucks, we have a very relatively new fleet of fire trucks. But things can happen. A transmission could drop out of one of them, I guess. You could say that. But the agreement is, you have 15 to 20 pots. Now, the fire department or DPW, I'm sure they have a record over the last couple of years of, you know, what their 15 or 20 pots were. There's a lot of pots, you know, to come up to this number. Just exercise some responsibility in getting to us a price, a net price, whether the list is X or Y. To just say that I'm going to accept a bid that just says a 20% off, nothing? Because I don't know? I'm not going to do it. I think that is just bad policy. I think it's bad business. And there's plenty of time to research and go back for bids if you anticipate there's a problem. So I'm not going to support that. Sorry.
That's all right.
Any other questions from anyone else on the council?
I just have a quick thing.
Sure.
So I agree, when looking at the bid, it is pretty clear because one of the things that came to mind is with tariffs coming and going seemingly at will, that if I was a company, I would be very hesitant to put a list price for anything if I was locked in. However, this makes it very clear that they are not locked in and that it's for evaluation purposes only. So I do think there is a disconnect between bidders and the city, or they're just being lazy, one or the other. That being said, it is true what the, what was stated as far as they did provide what is told is actually has to be held firm, which is the percentages. And as pointed out by the chief, they can't gouge us. That doesn't detract from Councilman Lattister's point that these people need to be providing this stuff. And if this was, there was more than one bidder and one provided it and one didn't, I think that would, should be considered accordingly. But we're not faced with that decision here.
Councilman Napa? I'm sorry, Mr. President, you, have you finished? Councilman Napa?
Council President, just to follow up on that. Director, you said there were some vendors that, yeah, you said there was only some vendors that serviced certain specific trucks, engines, rescues that we have?
Correct.
So are there some, there is, there are instances where we would only have like one choice for whom we were sending, say, Rescue 3 to?
Yes, that's why we asked for the Part B because the majority of those vendors are on the second part of this bid.
Okay.
So if you look at it, you'll see Coastal International is on there. That's where our rescues go. If it was Ford, we'd send them to a Ford dealer, but...
Just so I and we understand, let's say we are sending Rescue to Coastal. That's sort of our only option. And they start pushing the gas as far as the price goes, and that starts going up higher than what we would perceive normally as market. Would we have any other options? Because I think that sort of speaks to what Council President's getting at is without the list prices here, I think the concern is, especially with the limited market for vendors that can actually fix the apparatus we have, how do we control the city's downside as far as pricing, given all the tariffs and everything we may be facing?
So what happens when we send something out for repair? Is they, the vendor will send us a quote. It'll, they'll send, not to me. They send it to the automotive chief. And he decides whether or not that's a good price for something. Otherwise, he, you know, negotiates. Or, you know, we've sent things out and they say, "Oh, we find, you know, there's seven other things we found, found wrong with it." Well, six of those seven other things, we can fix in-house. He says, "No, I want you to fix X, Y, and Z, and that's it. Send the truck back. We'll take care of the rest of it." So we're very diligent in Public Works about making sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, so to speak. And I'm sure any of the Division chiefs can tell you that I am like, you know, a bloodhound. They send me something and I look at it and I say, "Okay, you know, what, like, what is this for? Why are we doing this?" Like, I question, you know, unless it's something that is like on a bid or whatever. But when it comes to these anomaly kind of things, not necessarily with, with automotive, but with them as well, I question them and say, "Why, why is this so expensive?" Like, you know, and then I get the explanation and if I'm satisfied, then we move on.
So, okay. Thank you. And just to, I want to thank you for your responsiveness and all the questions I've asked you over the last few days. And just for record's sake, you and I had a brief discussion via email about percentage and the amount of vehicles we do send out rather than do in-house. Could you just please put that on the record so that we can all understand what percentage of our repairs are actually going out to be serviced outside of house versus inside?
So I did kind of speak to that earlier, but we probably sent out about 5% of the repairs for automotive, excuse me, for fire and sanitation, if we have something on one of those vehicles that we, we can't fix. Those are primarily the only ones that we send out. We very rarely send out other things unless there's a warranty issue or, you know, something like part of it's covered, part of it's not, it's, gets a little muddy there. But so about 5% of the fire apparatus we send out, and that speaks to obviously what we spend over the years. It's also helped that they do have some new pieces of apparatus, which unfortunately are also not, they, they've had their flaws. So they've had to go out for warranty repairs. But we are very diligent about our spending.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Please. Just identify yourself for the record and speak directly into the mic.
Anne Sheridan, Ward 9. The purchasing agent commented that there's $65,000 in this account, in their budget account. In two weeks, you're going to start hearing testimony for the next fiscal year. And wouldn't this be more appropriate in the next fiscal year's spending? So you have an annualized view as to, a comprehensive view as to what they need for spending rather than approving something today that's going to commit you to $150,000 next year, which may not be the total amount that you even want to grant them for repairs for next year based on their prior year's spending? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions? Any comments? Any members of the public have any comments or questions? Kristi, I think Mrs. Sheridan just brought up a good point. So you still have approximately $65,000 sitting in that account. The contract expires on June 8. Wouldn't you be able to get a contract extension from them if this were to go back out for bid? And even before you answer, I guess, let me move back. One question. After this came in with no net prices, had you reached out to them and asked them for an extension?
No, we haven't. And just, I just want to clarify with the funds that we have left. I'm, I'm guessing. I'm not 100% sure that that's what we have left in our account. I didn't, I looked through them today, but I don't specifically remember. But at any given time, you know, vehicles are unpredictable, you know, especially the, the older ones and the ones that are now coming off warranty. Like, you know, I think Engine 3 is now out of warranty. So, you know, we can send something out and it can be a $200 repair because it was something that we couldn't fix, but they did it in a short amount of time with next to no parts. Or it could be $15,000. It's...
Okay. Council Solicitor? Typically, when you join the table, you have something that you would like to add? So are you here for protection for me? Is that it? Okay. That's a good thing. Anyhow. Any other questions? Any other questions? Move on to 2026-0118B. No, I understand. Oh, so to the clerk, I also wanted to ask for a PCR on 2025-419, please. Let me defer the question to the counsel solicitor.
So before we go back, Mr. Sheridan, I would suggest let's finish PCR 5725, which was formerly bid 2026-018A.
Okay.
If there's a recommendation of the council that we can go back and assign other PCRs.
Okay. All right, let's do that. On PCR 57-25, do we have a recommendation from the committee?
I recommend favorable action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any, any abstentions or recusals? Hearing none. I need a vote?
Aye.
Aye. No. Let the record indicate that there are two votes yes and one vote no on PCR 57-25. Moving on to PCR 58-25. I don't really have anything different or more to add, but Christie, I would like you to explain to us the difference in why you separated those two bids again, please.
So when we have to add vendors to a bid, we have to assign it, it's the same bid number, but it's, it's a Part B, basically. So what we're asking for in, in this Part B is a 566, which allows us, will give us the authorization to utilize these vendors that are listed here if needed to send fire apparatus out to be fixed.
And in my head, I view that a bit differently than the previous one of 2026-018A. With that said, I would be willing to remove the PCR unless there's an objection from the committee on 2026-018B. Any objections from the committee?
No.
Okay. And any specific procedure I need to do for that? Okay. Any additional questions from members of the committee? I'm sorry, members of the council. Any questions from members of the council? Any questions, comments from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, we will move on to, we're removing that PCR 58-25. No objections.
Correct. The PCR was removed. Bid 2026-018B remains on the consent calendar.
Okay. Now I need guidance on 2025-419.
Would you like a PCR?
I would like a PCR.
The first bid, 2025-419, a request has been made for a PCR.
So I think, I think the clerk's question is, are we going back? We've got a PCR 5725, so what is the procedure for assigning a PCR to 2025-419 because I neglected to ask for it at that time?
It's in order to put a PCR on it.
Madam Clerk, may I have a PCR for it, please? Thank you.
So we have taken full testimony on this, but we would need to assign a recommendation by the committee.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be in order to do that at this time.
Okay. I need a motion on PCR, what is now PCR 58-25, the food trucks.
Make a motion, move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. I'm not going to abstain, but, all in favor?
Aye.
No. So we have two yes and one no. Thank you on that. Maybe you want to hang out for a little while. All right, moving on, 2026-022, found on page 10. Christie?
Public Works is requesting to award this bid to the five vendors that submitted, excuse me, a bid in the amount of $110,000, and that will be for a two-year period, beginning July 1/25 and expiring June 30 of '27.
Thank you, Christie. Any questions from members of the committee? Councilman Napa?
Hi, Director, just wanted to follow up on email correspondence that you and I had. So my question directed to you relative to that was that this is split up over two line items in the budget, 63-231, which is designated computer, and 70-281, which is for maintenance items. Can you just explain why we're using the two different, and why if we're using one item, why are we not kind of just putting that all through one line item in a budget? And why, what's the rationale for splitting it up into two different?
So the 63-231, which is in, in our budget, is gravel. Is, is all of the materials on the list except for loom. Field maintenance uses the loom, you know, for their purposes of, you know, parks and fields and things like that. So we charge the loom to the appropriate budget, and then the rest of the materials, obviously, to highway, which would be the appropriate budget.
I understand. So then I think the issue probably lies in the Munis end of what we see.
There is, because I think when, when Munis was set up way back when, you know, 231 in certain budget codes is computer supplies, and somehow 231 in highway is for gravel. So I don't know, you know, where the, if you look in Munis, if you specifically go into 63-231, it says gravel. But I think if you...
That's all you get.
I think if you pull it out a different way, if you search it a different way, it will show supplies, computer.
Okay. All right, just, I just wanted to clarify that for the record because it struck me as odd, and I just wanted to understand, like, where we're plopping things around. Otherwise, I have no issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the public? Please.
Anne Sheridan again, and the question's the same. Why are we committing to contracts today that are effective in the next fiscal year and even the fiscal year after that when the new budget's not even been reviewed? I mean, I don't know how you can spend money you haven't appropriated.
I'll speak to that and I'll defer to Christie on that. One of the things that we have insisted on is that the department comes to us 60 days prior to the expiration of a contract. And we went through a period of time where that wasn't happening. I am happy to say that about the past year-ish, they have been doing that, and they have been coming to us in that timeframe that we've requested. So that would be my answer to that. I think that the, to the tax question where we don't know where we're at, and I'm not going to give you my opinion where I think we'll be at, but to essentially stop doing business at this point, I don't, I don't think that's such a good idea. But I will defer to Christie on that.
The reason that we ask on occasion for any bid, particularly the ones that, that begin in the new, the next fiscal year or carry over into the next fiscal year is because we, we can't stop what we're doing. We know that we will have a certain amount of funds allocated to us for, in our line items, and then we generally live within, within that, that funding availability. We know that we will have funding for gravel because we have road jobs to do or we have, you know, some other, you know, things that we have to fill in or things like that, or, you know, with the loom, the, the field maintenance, they have a job to do, they have to take care of our parks and our fields. And so we ask for the spending authority. And I know that it's, you know, two fiscal years, but we know that we will have some allocation of those funds. I guess is the best way I can explain it.
And just for a point of clarity, the, the spending authority for $150,000 on the last bids we were discussing and say $110 here, that doesn't necessarily give you carte blanche to go out and spend $110 tomorrow. You actually have to come back and get spending approval when you do items, or can you spend that?
So, so this, so any bid that's presented when we're asking for spending authority, we are granted spending up to that dollar amount. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend it, but we need, it's our job to make sure that, you know, depend, and the magnitude of what Public Works does, we need to make sure that we are in a position to take, either be proactive and take care of something prior to it happening, or, you know, obviously there's times where we have to be reactive and take care of something after it happens. So like, like a pothole, for instance, you know, we have to fix it after it happens. If, obviously, there's no pothole until it happens, you know? There's, there's things that happen, we get erosion, we get, you know, things like that where we have to take care of that. So we need to be able to secure the materials or the parts or the services or to anything that we do, you know, and that's why we have to come here.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful for Public in, for anybody that may be listening at home. Thank you.
Mr. Sheridan, go ahead.
My only thoughts were, and I'm not obviously in this business, but in good business, if you are in charge of landscaping and maintenance, at the beginning of the season, you would plan out your season, which starts, you know, probably March, February, you would order your materials so that by now, all of the materials they would probably need through most of the year should be contracted for, readily available, ready to disburse. And granted, there might be some emergencies, so the city provides for emergencies. I just, this, this whole concept of contracting today for things where you haven't even looked at the budget just doesn't set well with me on multiples. But I'm new to this game, so, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the public? Do we have any questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing none? Did you have any, anything else, Councilman Napa? Okay. Moving on to item 2026-021 Alpha, spring repairs and related work.
I promise I'll go sit down at some point.
Christie, how did you draw the short straw for all of this?
I've been busy.
Go ahead.
Public Works is requesting to award the bid for spring repairs and related work to Palmer Spring in the amount of $100,000 for a two-year period. And again, much like fire apparatus, we are, we have a B portion to this as well, which I will be happy to explain if you'd like me to.
And Palmer Spring was the only, the only bid you received, right?
Yes.
And you've done business with them in the past?
Yes, for many, many years.
And they've always performed?
They do get backed up. They're, they're good at what they do, but they have a lot of work. So sometimes, you know, we want to send, you know, it's particularly sanitation and fire apparatus, again, we need, want to send something out and they say, okay, it'll be, you know, three weeks before we can get to it.
Okay. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Are there any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number six, spring repairs, 2026-021 Bravo. Christie?
Again, this is just to add Woodward Auto, Auto Spring Shop to the bid for the spring repairs. This shop, we've also done a lot of business with in the past. I'm not sure why they didn't bid, but they are very good at turning trucks out within a, within a day or two of us needing them fixed. So if we can't send something to Palmer and it can't wait, you know, if we're a little short on sanitation vehicles, or we have a ladder truck that needs to get new springs in the back, or a rescue, this gives us an alternative vendor that we can utilize.
Christie, this $100,000, is this $100,000 for both 21A and 21B?
Yes.
Or $100,000 for each?
No, it's for both.
Total? Okay. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Are there any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 2026-024, found on page 24. Hi, Christie.
I think this is my last one. Public Works is requesting to award the bid for hydraulic parts and repairs to both vendors that submitted a bid, TriPower Sales and Services, as well as Lawson Products, for a two-year period in the amount of $60,000.
Do we have any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number eight, janitorial cleaning supplies, found on page 28.
Again, Public Works is requesting to award to four of the 12 vendors that submitted a bid for janitorial and cleaning supplies for Public Works. This is a one-year bid in the amount of $60,000.
Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to our last item, which is over $50,000. And we have a new presenter.
As Monty Python used to say, now for something totally different. Phil Carlucci, IT Director. This is a request under City Ordinance 566, exception to bid, to award the annual service contract for emergency services, workforce management software to Vector Solutions as the sole provider of their software as a service product. Crewsense Workforce Management in the amount of $50,124.37. I had mentioned in my position letter that this was significantly about 28% higher than last year, and when I investigated why, there's actually two items, two modules within this that handle asset management. For the last couple of years, they have been paid for via a grant that the fire department had received. That grant has expired, and we are now responsible for the maintenance. That makes up approximately $9,000 to $10,000 of this, this request.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions from members of the committee? Councilman Napa?
Not a question, just a comment. Chief, I got your email. I did, and I appreciate your response. I checked in with the chief about the expiration of the grant, and he had explained that the grant covered the initial setup of this, but it didn't cover any of the ongoing, and it was for two years of service, but it didn't cover anything ongoing. And he explained to me that it was vital to the department and its function, and I think it's sensical that we spend on the city side to cover what the grant did cover prior.
Thank you for that, Councilman, and that was a good observation on your part because your concern was, was very valid, because I have seen in the past when grants, while we're very happy to receive them, oftentimes when that grant expires, we are left with some significant decisions, decisions that people don't always want to have to make. Good observation. I'm going to start off with, I think what I'm going to do at this point is, Christie, you have two items that you want to make an amendment on, right? If it's okay with you, I'll just, let's take your, your first item. Let's, thank you, Mr. Carlucci. And that is item 2025-465, found on page 64, purchase Field Pro. Just tell us what your amendment is on that, Christie.
So I'd like to amend the award amount for this, this purchase to $41,243.08.
Okay. Any questions from members of the committee on that? Any questions from members of the council? Do I need to, yeah, I need to get a motion on that. We need to get a PCR on that. PCR 59-25, and the amendment will be to increase, I'm sorry, decrease. Good job on that, Christie.
Thank you.
I like that decrease stuff. Decrease from $43,183.02 to $41,243.08.
Motion to move favorable...
Hold on one second. Hold on, one second. I didn't say, I'm waiting for a second. Any questions from members of the committee, council? Any members from the council? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions or concerns from members of the public? Hearing none, I need a motion on PCR 59-25.
Motion to move favorable action as amended.
Do we have a second on the amendment? We have a motion, we have a second on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move favorable as amended, Councilman?
Motion, uh, motion to move favorable as amended.
We have a motion favorable as amended. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Christie, let's just, let's do your other one.
Okay.
Where you have the amendment. That's item 2025-466, found on page 90, purchase of infield mix.
Unfortunately, this one goes the other way. I am requesting to amend the dollar amount to $10,446.87.
Okay, so that'll become PCR 60-25. So Christie, tell us why this is necessary.
So the vendor that we have on bid for our infield mix, when we called for it, we had to get the fields at Mickey Stevens ready for the high schools to play on, they didn't have any available, so they had to find it elsewhere. And I submitted the paperwork to pay the initial bill that came in, and then after everything was all submitted and said and done, I received another invoice, which is why we have the amendment. So that's essentially what happened.
Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I need a motion on PCR 60-25 on the amendment.
Motion favorable on the amendment.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move favorable as amended, Councilman?
Motion more favorable as amended.
We have a motion, we have a second as amended on PCR 60-25. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Director, could I just have that number one more time?
Yes, it is $10,000. Hold on, I gotta put my glasses on.
44687.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any items that members of the committee wish to have pulled out? No? Any members of the council have any items that they would like to have pulled out? Silence is golden. Are there any members of the, um, the community, any members of the public would like to have anything taken out of the bid package and heard separately? Any members of the public wish to have anything pulled out? Hearing none. We are... So we need to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee. Okay, apparently I did not do that. I need a motion to approve the minutes from April 21st.
So moved.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we have, say what? Working on it. I'm sorry. That was three favorable on the minutes and one was absent. So I need a motion on the consent calendar.
Move favorable action on the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and we are adjourned at 7:10 PM. Thank you, everyone, and I apologize for the additional time that we have taken on this this evening.
Hi, all. Before we continue with committees, we're going to first convene the full council. So when you're able, if everyone can take their seats, please. By everyone, I mean the city council members. Everyone else is free to flee as desired. Clerical police call the roll.
Mr. Sinapi?
Here.
Mr. DeLuise?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattiser?
Here.
Mr. Muto?
Here.
Mr. Rix?
Here.
Need present.
If Councilman Rix will please lead us in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright lights and bright stars threw the narrow lullaby, for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the boughs were singing there, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And do we have any, for general communications, do we have any announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Now, I have one. Congratulations to our very own John Howell, who was recently inducted to the Rhode Island Heritage Hall of Fame. Does anyone else have anything for congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman DeLuise?
Yes, I'd like to request a moment of silence for one of our great employees of the city, Joanne Canoea's aunt, who was a, lived in my ward for a while, and her name is Gail Tapper.
We'll have a moment of silence. Does anyone else have anything for congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman Foley?
First, congratulations. My son, Michael, is a Providence firefighter. He was promoted last August, and finally, the city of Providence held a ceremony, a formal swearing-in this past sad day, so congratulations to my son, who is a captain on the Providence Fire Department, following the footsteps of his grandfather, my father, who was... The other thing is, if I could ask the city council if we could invite, for one of our June meetings, a young lady named Kaylee Foley, who is a... Oh, thank you. She recently got called on at the spur of the moment to sing the National Anthem at a road race this weekend in Warwick. She is a Warwick resident, and I would like to have the council invite her to sing the National Anthem for us live here in chamber, if my colleagues would be so willing.
So congratulations to her regarding her recent achievement, and then, as far as any invitation, we can't deal with that during general communications, but that definitely sounds like something we should do. Does anyone else have anything for congratulations, condolences, or community events? Councilman Gephardt?
I don't think we've done this yet here, but just a moment of silence for Senate President Dominic, Dominic Rogirio.
We did last time, but there's no reason not to do it again. We have a quick moment of silence for Senate President Rogirio. And then, Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And just an announcement that was brought to my attention over the weekend. The Boots to Briefcase folks are having a ping pong tournament on May 17th at Bishop Hendrick, and I understand that at least one of our colleagues will be participating in that event. It's a great event, obviously, and it's a really good cause. So I was just asked to make that announcement. So, May 17th, it's a ping pong tournament. You can have teams from the council, three, I think it's a three-person team, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Anything else for congratulations, condolences, or community events? Seeing none, unless there's any objection, we can go back to committees.
Point of order.
Fire away.
I know we do still have some folks here who intended to comment on the resolution in Intergovernmental 52, PCR 5225. There's, there, there are a few folks who, who hung out, so I just make the recommendation that rather going to, rather than going to ordinance next, that we go to Intergovernmental so we can let these folks get on with their evening.
There's a lot to unpack there. So first, as was stated prior, our normal procedure, if something is held, is for that no testimony to be received on it. That being said, there is currently no recommendation to hold, so if the, there is a, if a motion to hold does occur, and it is rejected, and those individuals are more than welcome to testify, however, if the motion is approved, then allowing them to testify is somewhat of a slap in the face to all the other people that were here and were notified of this procedure and left accordingly.
Yeah, with, with all due respect, it is speculative to imagine that that motion to hold would, would carry.
Absolutely.
We've not held such motion, so...
You are absolutely correct, and that's why it was phrased the way it was when it was brought up and notified to everyone. But if there's no objection, we can go to Intergovernmental first. Is there any objection?
Mr. Chairman, it's not that I have an objection to go to Intergovernmental first. I would have an objection to anything different than what was already discussed. This chamber was filled with people who wanted to speak, both for and against, and I had made that request, and it was procedurally denied.
All right.
To do anything different now, I would strongly oppose.
Right, and so just bear in mind, it's partially my fault for letting Councilman Gephardt state his full piece. We shouldn't be having this discussion now. That being said, that you're, what you're saying is not fall on deaf ears. So is there any objection, again, to go into Intergovernmental? All right, so seeing none, Intergovernmental, have at it, please. With no violence?
You don't need to get aggressive. You don't need to get aggressive. I don't want to get around.
I think I'm okay. It was, it was read earlier, but it looks to be okay now.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience, and thank you for letting us move this up. Intergovernmental comes to order at 7:20.
Sure.
Yep. Okay.
Let's see. All right. Councilman?
That's correct. If you're able and willing, yes, please. Okay, here we go. All right, right off the top, acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on April 21st.
Motion move favorable action.
Motion second. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, two clerical matters, if I may make suggestions.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Regarding the, the proposed appointments or reappointments of the four individuals here, the agenda does not have adequate description of the committees that they are going to be reappointed to, so it would be in order that I would recommend that the committee hold these until the June 2nd meeting.
Okay. Any objection to holding these until we can have them properly noticed on the agenda? I will note that all of these are reappointments, so is anyone who's being appointed this evening in... Okay. Mr. Brown is here, but unfortunately, Mr. Brown, there, there was a clerical error on the agenda for this committee, so if there's no objection among the committee members, we'll move to hold to the May 22nd meeting.
June.
Six-two. June 2nd meeting. That's correct. Mr. Brown, you do, you are not required to appear for that meeting, given that you're already a member of, of the Seminary Commission. Okay? Thank you for coming out. So motion to hold to June 2nd.
Motion to hold appointments to June 2nd.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman. The other clerical item is to amend the agenda to correct a reversal of two numbers on it. So on PCR 5225, the reference to the House bill in the title is listed as 5346. It is actually 5436. So if you would amend the agenda, this has no impact on the item itself, this is just correcting our records, but it would be appropriate for the committee to entertain a motion to correct that House Resolutions reference number to be 5436.
Understood. Do we have a motion to make the amendment that solicitor just referenced?
Motion to make an amendment to reflect House Bill 5436 rather than 5346.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman. The other clerical item is to amend the agenda to correct a reversal of two numbers on it. So on PCR 5225, the reference to the House bill in the title is listed as 5346. It is actually 5436. So if you would amend the agenda, this has no impact on the item itself, this is just correcting our records, but it would be appropriate for the committee to entertain a motion to correct that House Resolutions reference number to be 5436.
Understood. Do we have a motion to make the amendment that solicitor just referenced?
Motion to make an amendment to reflect House Bill 5436 rather than 5346.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, as I stated before we came up here, we still have some folks looking to comment in 5225. Is there any objection amongst the committee to, to just sequencing that to be first on our agenda prior to PCR 4525?
No objection.
Hearing none, we will proceed with PCR 5225. Resolution requesting the General Assembly to support constitutional rights to bear arms and oppose the Rhode Island Assault Weapons Ban Act of 2025, H 5436, and S 359, co-sponsored by Councilman Lattiser, Council President Sinapi, Councilman Napa, Councilman Foley, Councilman Muto, Councilman Kirby, and Councilman DeLuise.
I'd like to make a motion to hold that PCR to our meeting on 6/2, as discussed prior by Council President Sinapi.
We've got a motion on the table, and it has been seconded for discussion. We do have members who stayed the course here and are still in the room. My preference would be to, to, to move this along and do what business we can. Councilman, you mentioned that you had an amendment you'd like to get in here, and there may be, oh, amendment to this one.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
That's what I said. This... What, once, we'll, we'll get to you momentarily.
There was a miscommunication between he and I.
What's that?
So your, your amendment is on PCR 4525.
That's what I suggested to move that to the...
Understood.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
You're not recognized yet, Councilman.
Well, tell me what you said.
I, I had suggested an amendment to the first item, which would have taken some time, so I had asked the chair to move our resolution to be addressed first, to allow the folks that stayed to, to leave and not be burdened by listening to us haggle over a tax bill.
So you're looking to make an amendment to 5225?
No.
Okay.
There was a miscommunication between the council, the chair and I.
Sorry. Thank you for acknowledging me.
Okay, now that we have that before us, we have a motion to hold. We have... So, again, this is against our processes. If a member of the committee wishes to appeal the rule of the chair, I would suggest they do that.
Make a motion to appeal the rule of the chair.
Gonna need a second on that. So.
Mr. Chairman?
We've got a new motion?
I strongly object to this. You had people in this chamber waiting for an hour or more, and this was held, and they were told it was being held, they were also told that, you know, there's no games being played here.
Councilman, with all, with all due respect.
So, no, I'm gonna say what I have to say. You're trying to pull a fast one here, and I object to it. There is no comment from the people that waited here for over an hour. The room was filled with people pro and against, and they didn't have an opportunity. Now you want to try and change the rules. I object.
Councilman, with all due respect, the item's not held until the council votes on it to be held. So we have a, a motion to hold, which is now tabled. We've got a motion to overrule the decision of the chair, which has been moved and seconded.
I request the decision from the city councilor.
There was a motion to second, the hold, I think, just, it was a verbiage issue. The motion itself is not tabled at the moment. Right now, there's an appeal of the decision of the chair to allow the public to speak on the motion to hold. That, that appeal was moved and seconded, so now it's up for the committee to vote on set appeal, and I would overturn the rule, the decision of the chair, which would thus disallow the public from speaking on the motion to hold, per our standard rules and procedures.
Question?
Is that a point of order, Councilman?
I just, on procedure, I have a question.
Sure, sure.
The comments from the public are only about holding. Am I correct in answering this? Because the motion that is in front of us now, that he's asking for public comment, the motion.
The motion that's in front of us right now, that he's asked for public comment on, is a motion to, to hold.
Can someone appeal for a second?
Yes.
So we're, we have, we're on a pre.
So there was a second to the motion on the determination of the chair to allow comment. We will proceed to have a vote on that motion.
So we're on discussion now?
The question is if you would like to proceed with comment as the chair has indicated his interest.
So we're on discussion of the over, of the override?
Only amongst the committee members.
Correct. So committee members, any conversation on the motion that has been seconded to override the decision of the chair?
Yes, so we had made a collective decision, and Council President had spoken on two occasions prior to this committee convening, telling the full chamber, both sides, for and against, who both deserve to be recognized on this item, that we were going to hold out of respect for their time and for coming out, and to give them notice to come again when this matter was amended at the House as requested by the House. I think we need to respect both the House's recommendation, the Council President for displaying the intent of the city council to the public, and allowing the people that were here to speak both for and against to come back out and speak. To allow one or two members that may have stuck around while we appreciate your time to allow them to speak without anyone else here is absolutely absurd.
Heard?
Question, question.
Councilman Foley?
Question to my colleague, Councilman Napa. So you're agreeing with the, the president that there should be no discussion on the resolution tonight?
Correct. There should be no discussion. It was put forth by the Council President to everyone that was in chambers that we were going to hold, and in light of representations made by this honorable board, by our Council President specifically, pretty much everyone had vacated. It's, it's in a matter of fairness to the public to be able to be heard. To usurp their right is absolutely inexcusable.
I'll, 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 thank you. Are your comments finished on that?
I'll just give my two cents. My two cents would be that a motion's not held, there was no discussion with me about holding. I, in no way was briefed on that, and we're in a public meeting, we should be making decisions publicly, that's the point of the committee. Second, we have been excoriated many times before your time on the council, when we have members here who want to say their piece, and then we decide at the last minute to hold an item, and then don't give them the opportunity to say their piece, which just discourages public participation and quite frankly is embarrassing. So I agree, I wish everyone was still here and we could continue as planned. However, I will, I'll vote with you on the motion to overrule. I just think it's an important discussion to have, it's a bad precedent to get people all whipped up to come down here to participate in the public process and then get cold feet at the last minute and pull the thing.
So as a point of information, I'm going to interject to make sure to clarify a few things that were just stated by the various individuals. As Councilman Gephardt said previously, there was no concrete hold previously. What was stated was that we have been requested to hold, and per our standard procedures, if said hold occurs, we will not be taking testimony on this item. This is something we have done time and time again over the years in this exact way, so none of this is new to anyone. That being said, I, I, I don't want to, but I need to make another clarification. Chairman Gephardt, you were in fact notified of this request to hold prior by me individually informing you in a conversation on the stairwell. This normally does never need to be brought up, but I, I am somewhat baffled by, of anything else was said, and per the Open Meetings Act, I am permitted to have that discussion with you. So I'm, I'm very unclear where we're going right now. It sounds like we were getting back on track, but I can't allow misstatements. I'm not going to assume it was, said with any intent, so it's a mistake, but I hope we can proceed accordingly now. Are there any other comments on the motion on the table?
Oh, I didn't know you recognized me. I just want to clarify, I, I thought, Councilman Napa, you made a motion to appeal the president.
My decision to allow Mr. Zaram to testify.
I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
So that is the motion on the table, we can proceed with a vote?
Yes, I, I call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, just clarify what people are voting on.
I would be. Go ahead.
A vote on yes confirms Councilman Gephardt's position, a no vote would be a vote to end discussion and proceed to the hold motion. So did you, did you withdraw the?
I said I'll vote with you, whatever, whatever way, but.
So it was important. So a yes vote would proceed towards opening up commentary, a no vote would move us to the motion to hold.
Thank you for clarifying. No.
Nope?
No.
No.
Okay.
So the motion to hold to June 6th was moved and seconded, and you could proceed at that time?
Okay, motion to hold to June 6th is in order, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there public comment on the motion?
No, no. No, the item has been held to June 2nd.
June 2nd. Okay, are we done there? All right, moving to our next item, PCR 4525. A resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend RIGL 44567.2 regarding property tax classification for the City of Warwick to better stabilize property tax payments. This is Council President on behalf of the administration. Council President? So I'll leave this to Neil Dupree, although I should mention that my understanding is that maybe, there may be an amendment forthcoming, but that being said, I yield to the administration.
Good evening, Neil Dupree, Director of Assessing. We had come before this body approximately two years ago to amend this same statute at the state level, because we needed a little bit more leeway between the residential class and the commercial class. At that point, we had hoped that there would be enough within that adjustment that was made back then to carry us through a few different years, but as it worked out, that adjustment only worked in that first year. So now that we're performing another revaluation, it's bringing up the same issue. So the, the language that you see before you, the intent was to solve it not only for this pending revaluation, but so that we don't keep having to go back in front of the General Assembly every time we do a revaluation. But I want to go back and stress that nothing that we're proposing here tonight is trying to increase the taxes on any commercial property owner, but rather to maintain the amount of revenue that was coming from the commercial class versus what was coming from the residential class. An unintended consequence of the revaluations is that typically it, it shifts some of the burden to the residential property owner, just simply because the market is more slow and steady on the commercial side, and in this market, the, the residential market has grown much faster. So again, most large commercial taxpayers would see a decrease that they're not asking for, and, and as a former business owner myself, one of the main things from a commercial standpoint is we like to see slow and steady predictable changes to our expenses rather than large swings one way or the other. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
So Director, the Class 1 property tax rate shall be not less than 57% of the Class 2 property tax rates, so shall be not less. So this is basically a, a, a minimum or maximum threshold?
Yeah, so that was existing language that has been in the statute for, for decades. Initially, before we amended it in 2022, it was 67%. Most of these statutes in other municipalities will restrict it to say no more than one and a half times the residential rate on the commercial side, but ours goes the opposite way, so we're saying that the residential, residential rate can't be less than 57% of the commercial rate, which is the equivalent of 1.75 times the residential rate on the commercial.
And so in, in this update, you would benchmark the prior year ratio and use that, is that what you're?
What the goal was, was to set, right now, our commercial tax base, if we look at last year fiscal year '25, 32% of the net tax levy came from the commercial tax base. So we'd like to maintain that revenue, we've got growth within the commercial tax base at that taxation level, so it's certainly not onerous on the commercial property owners. But if we weren't to make these adjustments, again, a lot of the larger commercial property owners would see a reduction that they're not asking for.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do you want to comment on the amendment that you have in mind? Okay, all right, so Councilman Napa?
Thank you, Director, and thank you for taking the time earlier to discuss this with me.
Certainly.
So, just so the council can be clear as to our discussions, the intent here is to give the city flexibility both in setting the tax rate and also adjusting the ratio, if necessary, to reflect current market standards, growth in the city, growth of commercial properties, vacancies, so on and so forth. Is that the understanding of the?
Yeah, so for instance, if we saw that the tax policy we're going to hopefully put in place was having an adverse impact on the commercial market, there's tools within this legislation that would allow the council to adjust that base percentage and incentivize more development, so that was the idea.
And so my concern with, and I think the, the language you've suggested does accomplish those goals, however, my concern is the more we pack into legislation like this, more but for language or but if language, and to try to foresee every possible carve out, I think the more we pack in, the more the muddy the water that gets. I think a simple strikeout, and our council solicitor did confirm that if we just simply strike out on line 12, anything after the semicolon, so further that the rate of taxation is uniform within each class, there's a semicolon, and then and provided further, and that's where it gets into the percentages, if we strike out anything after, uniform within these, in each class, change that semicolon to a period and strike out everything else, I believe that that accomplishes the goal of giving the city the ability to both adjust the tax rate and the ratio to an appropriate level, given current market conditions year over year. And it still provides that it, it has to be approved in the same manager that, in the same way that a budget would be approved through the city council, so it doesn't remove any sort of constraints or approval processes that this body has over the process, but it does, I think, give the city flexibility, and I think skeletal nature of this type of resolution or this type of legislature, if it does pass, is sort of paramount to give the city the ability to move, and I think there is, the Director had shared with me that this is facing some challenge as proposed, and it would likely face challenges as amended if the amendment is acceptable to this body. But there is precedent for the amendment that I'm suggesting. North Providence in the current legislature, 44-5-58, Cranston in 44-5-20.4, and also I found East Providence, 44-5-20.27, has almost identical language as to what I would propose, and the Director had enlightened me that they go a step further and they kind of codify within their local ordinance their desire for ratios and such. I feel it's probably appropriate to simplify the legislature so we can sort of move away from asking the state for approval to change things and keep things in-house, simplify the legislation, address it at the ordinance level within the cities that we can maintain control and streamline the process here instead of volleying it back and forth to the legislature every several years.
Okay. Do you all have a preference as to whether I have, we have him make the motion now for discussion?
I'm always, I think it's easier to take the amendments in the full council, but it's welcome to discuss the, put it on record, the intent. Ultimately, it'd be duplicative if we, you know, on the, on the amendment.
Can you say it one more time, just cohesively, so that everyone has clear in their minds?
So if we're looking at the existing legislation, the assessor of the City of Warwick on or before June 15th of each year shall make a full and fair cash valuation of all estate, real and personal, including motor vehicles and trailers, subject to taxation, and determine the assessed valuation of each property class. The assessor has the authority to apply different ta, ta, different rates of taxation to each class and determine the tax due and payable on the property, semicolon, provided that, that the rates are pursuant to an annual tax resolution approved in the same manner as provided for budget approval in the city charter. Another semicolon, provided further that the rate of taxation is uniform within each class, and I suggest that we just end it there.
Period.
So we're protecting the, the classes in general, we're protecting the rights of this body to approve any changes in the budget rates, I mean, the tax rates, and giving the city the flexibility it needs.
Understood. Okay, thank you, very helpful. Do any members of the committee have any questions on the language change, on, on the amendment as proposed? No? Members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. So, my understanding from what I've heard is what you're looking to do is simply provide the city with flexibility so that you don't have to, or the city doesn't have to keep going back to the General Assembly. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, we'd like to see a tax policy that's specific to Warwick, rather than letting the state mandate a one-size-fits-all for what Warwick needs are.
that uh, that the rates are pursuant to an annual tax resolution approved in the same manner as provided for budget approval in the city charter. Another semicolon, provided further that the rate of taxation is uniform within each class, and I suggest that we just end it there.
Period.
So we're protecting the, the classes in general, we're protecting the rights of this body to uh, approve any changes in the budget rates, I mean the tax rates, and giving the city the flexibility it needs.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Very helpful. Um, do any members of the committee have any questions on the language change, on, on the amendment as proposed? No? Members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. So my understanding from what I've heard is what you're looking to do is simply provide the city with flexibility so that you don't have to, or the city doesn't have to keep going back to the general assembly. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, we'd like to see a tax policy that's specific to Warwick rather than letting the state mandate a one size fits all for what Warwick needs are.
And I know that you and I have had some discussion on this issue along with the chief, and I want to um, thank you for including the language that I had proposed about advice and consent of the city council on those changes. Um, that's appreciated. Councilman Napper, um, I must commend you on your research. Excellent job on pulling out that research and giving us comparatives to what other communities are doing as well. I appreciate that. But I just want to be sure I understand that on um, in that same 45 dash five dash 67.2, line 10 through 12, do I understand correctly that um, you are, are you looking to change that language or are you looking to change the language in line 13 where it says property taxes shall not be less than 57% of Class Two? Could you just?
What I was proposing was to simply strike out and provided further for each year, Class One property tax shall be not less than 57% of Class Two property tax rates. So simply just strike out everything else. That leaves in place the uh, necessity for approval by the city council for any rate changes. So any mill rate changes, we would have to approve it. Um, and it just, it removes this complicated formula that's worded rather poorly and gives the city some flexibility.
And then, sorry, just to clarify, and then it picks back up at line 23, starting with section two, right?
Yes, yeah, so strike out just that, strike out the suggested blue line changes we have, and it would, the section two, this act should take a passive one, uh, take effective on passage. That would all remain in place.
And as an additional point, let me, let me just um, back up, it would be a question to the solicitor, but I'll ask, I'll go to the, to the director first. Class One, residential, Class Two, commercial, Class Three, tangible, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that you had answered for me as well because I wasn't um, I wasn't in tune to what those different classes were. And if I didn't have a recall on it, I'm sure the average citizen would. Uh, through the chair to the solicitor, the proposed amendment from Councilman Napper is um, it's essentially the same things that I had talked with you about earlier?
Yes, um, the amendment that, that the Councilman Napper is looking at would, I think the best way to describe it is begin with um, getting rid of the blue line language that is proposed. So that new language that was attempted to be inserted into the state general law, we would not do that. Um, it would continue the um, deletion to make that full clause on lines 12 and 14, uh, 12 through 14, remove that, and then we would insert an and at the end of, after the semicolon on 11, just for, to make it read proper. But effectively, it, the point would be not to do the new blue language that was being asked and also to strike from the existing law, the language pertaining to the 57%. The city council uh, would still adopt that ratio through the budget resolution that we do every year. Um, so we would still have to vote on what the balance of the, amongst the classes are. And this can also be supplemented with an ordinance that um, sets other parameters, such as whether it's the 57% or anything else. The complicated nature that I think the director has identified is that um, a few years ago, we asked to change this based on differences of needs, and unfortunately, we've seen additional changes to what's going on in Warwick. So for us to keep asking the general assembly to change this, doesn't necessarily always make the best sense. Um, the council um, could establish guardrails through an ordinance to, you know, put any guardrails on that they would like to see fit differently than always asking the assembly. But at the same time, the council would still be subject to setting that balance uh, within the, the tax rates.
Okay, um, I'm comfortable at this point with, with that, particularly where, you know, the city council, and it's, it's not, this isn't directed towards the current administration of the current city council. People have heard me saying this for years. This is also a concern about future administrations and future councils. And I think um, with this amendment that you've um, made, Councilman Napper, along with your suggestions, Director, that um, it does give flexibility, but it also keeps the um, the final say here with the city council regardless of who's sitting in this, in these chairs. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the council have any um, anything that, any members of the public? Absolutely.
Absolutely, right. Okay, Ms. Sheridan, first off. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Ian.
Uh, as you all know, I think highly of him. But Class One and Class Two, is that state class or is that city classification?
No, we have uh, legislation at the state level, uh, so section 67.1 defines the classes, it's in state law.
And does that include residential condominiums?
It does, Class One.
Okay, I'm good on that one. I am happy about this scheme, but it needs to be limited to valuation updates, to either the revaluation or statistical updates, to be fair to residential properties, because I see a huge red flag in here when you're talking about vacancies in commercial property, which alludes me to the fact that between revaluations, there's an opportunity for commercial to become, to come in and have their assessment changed when the residential property is going to be fixed at the three years. So if residential is going to be fixed at the three years, commercial should be fixed for three years.
Can, can I ask you a follow-up question, Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Um, does the uh, proposed amendment that Councilman Napper suggested of essentially removing um, the, all the parts following that are more prescriptive and start to talk about but, new buildings, building additions, vacancy, et cetera, is excluding that, does that help with your concern?
Well, I didn't think he, you, you, when you just said 12 to 14 was going to be eliminated, it alluded to the rest of it was going to stay. In any event, I think there needs to be a clear determination that this change is made once at any time we do a general assessment change, because I don't think there should be any fluctuation between that. Um, there was one more thing, and I just, and I just went completely, completely blank on it.
While you're thinking, Ms. Sheridan, Director?
Sorry?
Does, does that, does that make sense, uh, Ms. Sheridan's point about?
To some extent. The, the reason why it was added in there in the first place is we know there's going to be opposition at the state level uh, when we testify at the general assembly. So we wanted to show the, the guardrails that we were trying to put in place to make sure that we had mechanisms within um, the, the statute at that point. Now it would be within the local ordinance or happen as a result of the budget hearings. But um, we wanted to make sure that if the tax policy that we put in place was hurting the commercial segment, that there was a process in place to correct that pain that comes. Tax policy drives our growth and, and so, but now at this point with the amendment that's been made, if that goes forward, it strikes all that, it goes away.
I still want to see it, see something definitive. And the other comment was talking about um, tax incentives. Tax incentives should be the only jurisdiction of the council. If anybody's granting any commercial tax, abatement, incentive, deal, whatever you want to call it, it should be only the council, which you represent the entire city. Um, we don't want to leave it open, so any administration can decide they're going to give any kind of exemption to, I don't think there's any place in Rhode Island general laws that gives any city or town that flexibility. I mean, everybody's got tax stabilization rules and kind of, and I think we need more guideposts along the way that the adminis, that the city council in total should be responsible, you're responsible for the taxes and the budget. So any giveaways should be strictly in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Just state your name for the record, please, Ms. Comar.
Michelle Comar. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Um, I agree with the previous speaker, well-thought comments. And um, Director, thank you for a little history in the background. I do remember when Council President McAllister um, had a um, amendment to this that shifted tax burden more towards commercial, which you mentioned. Um, and I, and it, to put it in our toolbox, it was phrased. I don't know if it was ever used. Um, because it was advertised with notifying commercial business owners about this potential shift burden on, more on them and away from residential, people came out. Business owners came out and spoke against it. The Central Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce came out and spoke against it because it was noticed properly, that people understood it was a shift in tax burden from residential more so on commercial. This doesn't happen here this time. Um, I think we're going to be the only two speakers on this, taxpayers tonight. It, and the agenda um, that was posted has the purpose of these changes to state law to better stabilize property tax payments. Payments are up to the person. Can they afford it? Are they going to be in tax lien or whatever? I think this is, has to deal with tax rates, not payments. And the director explained the purpose of this was to shift the burden to residential taxpayers. If you had put this in the agenda that was posted, you'd probably get more residential taxpayers here tonight. Um, I'm going to, and I see the mic, he's supposed to have the mic, um, solicitor, because my question would be, is this clearly in respect of the Open Meetings Act? Because I don't see how the public knows that there's a shift proposed from the tax burden from commercial more in the direction of residential and that taxpayers, residential taxpayers may be pouring?
Ms. Comar, do you mind if I pause you there for one second?
Sure, go ahead.
Because I think you're getting, I think your, your statements are backwards and I just don't want to mislead anyone who's, who's listening at home, so, uh, Mr. Director Dupree, could you?
Yeah, just as point of clarification, so the revaluation itself has an unintended consequence of shifting the burden if we do nothing. Leave the classification system that we had in place and go forward, the residential taxpayers would have to pay more, the commercial taxpayers would see a decrease in what they pay. So it's just the opposite. Um, and, and it wasn't about increasing the taxes even back in 2022. You mentioned an amendment that, that increased the taxes. That wasn't true at that point either. Uh, we just wanted to stabilize and not have to lower the taxes on the large commercial property owners just as a function of the market changing. These people weren't asking for reductions, uh, and they're not asking for them now. But I'd like to say the historic two-year period that we've now had a benefit from probably is the reason why there's nobody here tonight. Not the lack of notification, not the way the notice was worded, but they now trust what we said two years ago, that they weren't going to get an increase, and that's the same impact that it will have now.
Well, I didn't think the legislation was very clear as a layperson, and I would expect the description here to be clear, so people can decide if they're going to attend this council meeting and hear the vote. And I don't believe it's in the best um, light of the Open Meetings Act, and to better stabilize property tax payments, it's tax rates. And stabilize to me, general definition is to make or become unlikely to change, fail, or decline. That's stabilized, no change. I don't think that's what we meant here.
Ms. Comar, can I have, I think the director's itching to, to jump on that one also?
I'm not seeing him out of the corner of my eye.
It's okay, I, I can see you both.
Yeah, just to clarify, the intent is to stabilize the revenue coming in from each class of property. So prior to uh, this current reevaluation, 32% of the tax levy, the net tax levy, came from the commercial class. What we're proposing is to keep that the same, although there's been amendment on the floor that would let the council weigh in on that at another point in time and give the public an opportunity to weigh in during the budget process to that same percentage that they would be applying at that time.
Right, so I was going to ask for an example. My, my comment still holds that I believe this is not in the best light of the Open Meetings Act, um, for the reasons of stabilized means to un, to unlikely to change or keep the same, and property tax payments. Um, people choose when they want to make their payments. I think if, if we said to shift um, the burden, as the director said in the beginning, to residential taxpayers, we would have got a fair showing tonight. If you were to have during your budget hearings, we're shipping tax burden to residents.
To the chair, please.
Director.
You, you've mentioned that a couple of times. That was never said. We are not shifting any burden to the residential taxpayer. The revaluation, the results of the market would do that. The city is not asking, I am not asking to shift any burden. Please don't say that again.
Thank you. I thought I heard that from you because I wrote the note down.
Ms. Comar?
Yes.
So if we do nothing, the burden would then shift. So by coming forth to try to do something, this, this city and the administration has, they're, they're taking affirmative steps to try to protect the residents, to keep your net proportion of taxes the same. So I think is, there's a lot packed in here, and I understand the confusion, but that's, it's, it's the intent of the administration to keep the tax burden as is for the taxpayer relative to how much proportion of tax are paying.
Mr. Chairman?
If they do nothing, then you're going to have a burden.
Ms. Comar, do you have anything else?
I can be interrupted again.
So through the chair to the council solicitor, um, Ms. Comar asked the question of whether or not this could be an open meetings violation. So I think to clear that up, we should hear from the council solicitor. That's my request.
I, I'm open to hearing from the solicitor.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Comar, do you have anything else?
Um, what would have been helpful is to take an example, like, I don't know what the typical um, home value is, maybe 400, whatever the typical is.
Again, you, you're mixing up things that haven't been said. We're not talking individual taxpayers. Individual taxpayers might go up and might go down. The goal of this legislation is to equalize by class of property for the entire class to bring in the same amount of revenue as we received last year prior to the revaluation. That's all that's being proposed.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Ms. Comar, you just have one minute left, so I don't want you to run out of time if you have any?
Oh, thank you.
Any new questions?
Um, I think an example would have helped, uh, based on today and the tax rates today to see what this change could develop into, because this is kind of open-ended. We don't know exactly what the tax rates are going to be for residential versus commercial. And my final question is, the purpose of this, is it, have anything to do, is there a decline in commercial development or is, are there more vacant commercial properties? What's happening in trends in the city?
Okay, this is where we might have an open meetings thing, but I'll quickly answer because it's somewhat related. So no, the commercial market in Warwick is not um, seeing any adverse conditions in the current market. We are heavily weighted in office and we're heavily weighted in retail, both which are suffering regionally, but so far we're doing well with that. But commercial growth in, in the values is typically slow and steady, but we're in a market where the residential uh, properties have increased dramatically over a short period of time. So they've outpaced the growth in the commercial, which by itself will shift the burden.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad the council has studied this more so than I understand it and I trust going forward that you're taking care of the taxpayers, but believe me, advertise this as a shift to the residential uh, taxpayers and you'd get many people filling the room.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Comar.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome. Sir, step right up. Just state your name for the record, please.
Bill Nye.
Bill Nye? Welcome.
I have a question. How is the ta, uh, revenue neutral tax rate calculated? I have a question. How is the revenue-neutral tax rate calculated?
Okay, number one, that's not in the agenda tonight. But again, loosely related, so we'll give it just a brief little comment. The revenue coming into the city by law and the Department of Municipal Finance at the state level approves a notice that's going to be put in the paper on Thursday showing that we have raised no money from the revaluation. And at that point, we can be up to 4% over last year's levy based on what was already submitted in fiscal '25. And the state will approve that. It's not my calculations, it's not the Finance Director's calculations, it's the state of Rhode Island.
Director, can I hold you there? So, we're not going to go down that path any further just because that, the item, there's no item on our agenda specific to that. So, other members of the public don't have the opportunity to come out and comment on that. Do you have any comments, Mr. Nye, specifically to PCR 45-25?
Well, the answer to that question underlies a lot of the, or the main basis of, of that amendment, which is to keep the tax burden equally proportioned. However, it starts with that calculation. So, I'd appreciate it if someone could come up with that answer.
Asked and answered.
Thank you, Ms. Nye. Okay, any other members of the public have any comments on PCR 45-25? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, sir. So, to Ms. Comar's question or comment, I'm looking at Sub A on line 21 through 23. It says allocations... I'm just preparing. Okay. Allocations, increase in the commercial vacancy rates including residential apartments of six units or more, the desire to incentivize new construction or in the event of a significant decrease in value from Class 1, Class 2, Class 3. Those, that type of action, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, that's why I'm asking, that would also have to come before the City Council? For approval?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any others? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the administration and especially the tax assessor for recognizing the importance of this, maintaining stability. Coming up in the near future is... If this measure were not...
Yeah, so certainly be firming up the estimates that are currently in-house as part of the budget process. And then the final numbers would be at certification of the tax roll.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You, Councilman. Okay, do we have anyone else? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion? We're going to do the amendment on the floor with the full council.
So, this, we did read the full amendment. So, if the committee wants to move it, move it as previously stated by the Solicitor, then we can put that in play for the council.
Okay, we've read and discussed the full amendment. I think everyone understands it. It's a Occam's razor-type amendment, simplify. Do we have a motion to move the amendment?
Motion to move favorable on the amendment.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment carries and on PCR 45-25, as amended.
Motion to move favorable action as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilman DeLuise. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, intergovernmental. It's done with all of our business. We stand adjourned at 8:11 PM.
Next up is Ordinance Committee. Okay, the time is 8:12 and the Ordinance Committee is now in session. First, I'd like to write this down. Second, like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the committee meeting held on April 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Move, do I have a second? All those have a second by Councilman Ricks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two items on our agenda today. First item is PCO-9-25, Sub A, an ordinance amending fire department composition, age requirements for applicants superintendent of fire alarms, mandatory retirement ages and definitions. This is put forth by Council President Sinapi on behalf of the mayor and this is up for second passage. Anyone on the committee wish to comment on this item? Any members of the full council? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-0, motion, PCO recommended favorable. Second item, PCO-11-25, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the south side of Staples Avenue from intersection of Midley Avenue southeastward to 70 Staple Avenue. And this PCO is put forth by Councilman Kirby. I would suggest we yield the floor to Councilman Kirby to speak on this if there's no objection.
What's your pleasure, Councilman?
Councilman Kirby, if you'd like to present on this item?
Motion to go forward?
He wants us to go forward.
Okay, going forward. Confidence, Councilman Kirby is making a good recommendation here in light of traffic issues and parking and a like to, in an effort to keep the residents safe relative to traffic through that area. Do I have a motion for favorable action?
Move favorable action.
Oh, sorry. Standby. Any questions from the committee? Questions or comments?
No.
Questions or comments from the full council? Questions or comments from the general public? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Move by Councilman Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second by Ward 2.
Second by Councilman Ricks and all those in favor?
Aye.
4-0, first passage. And we stand adjourned at 8:15.
New Public Properties next. So, Public Properties is meeting now.
The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use and Community Affairs comes to order at 8:17 PM. We have acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on April 7th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, first up, we have, this is for second passage. This is in Councilman Kirby's ward. PCO 5-25, order on the abandonment of a portion of Harper Street. John Harold, Barbara Harold, Karen Harold, Bruce Moore, Mary Moore, Nancy Stockard, and Jason Stockard petitioners. Councilman Kirby, do you have a recommendation for second passage?
Motion to go forward?
All right, we have a favorable recommendation. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Motion for favorable action by Councilman Kirby. Do we have any, let's see, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman DeLuise. Any comment, members of the committee? Any comment, members of the council? Any comment, members of the public? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 4-0 in favor. Second, this is also for second passage. This is Councilman Gebhardt. PCO 7-25, Sub A, order on the abandonment of a portion of Old Quaker Lane, Colby Enterprises LLC petitioner. Councilman Gebhardt, do you have a recommendation on second passage?
Yep, no, no issue proceeding on this. There was some questions related to the historical cemetery directly behind the property. However, I've been told by the city that there is a, there, there's some portion of the street that is not being abandoned, so there will be access. Also, the historical cemetery is in West Warwick and there is access to that property from there. So, no objections on my part. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any, let's see, pardon me, do we have a motion? Thank you. A second? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the, the time. Please proceed with the completion of PCO 7-25, Sub A. Thank you, Council Solicitor. So, let's see, we had a motion from Councilman Foley. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Kirby. Okay, do we have any discussion, questions, comments, members of the committee? Questions, comments, members of the council? Questions, comments, members of the public? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, 4-0 for second passage. That is recommending favorable action, second passage.
Mr. Chairman.
Solicitor.
Thank you. If it would be, we ran through PCO 5-25 a little quickly. If the committee would indulge, there's some cleanup that we need to do, both on the agenda, but also there, I believe there might have been a potential amendment for consideration on that front. So, at this time, would the committee entertain a motion to reconsider PCO 5-25?
I'll move, oh, thank you. Councilman Kirby, so moves, do we have a second? Oh. Oh, okay, correction. The motion was made by Councilman Foley and seconded by Councilman Kirby. Pardon that. Okay, all in favor of reconsideration?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Council Solicitor.
Mr. Chairman, now that we're back on PCO 5-25, when we last entertained this item, we held it for a month pending a review of a potential amendment that the administration, that the petitioners, council, and the administration were going to speak to regarding the removal of the easement language as was done on PCO 7 later that evening. But first up, if the agenda could be amended to reflect first passage of PCO 5-25?
Certainly. Shall we do these as separate amendments?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Foley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Mr. Chairman, if the administration would come?
Hi, Tom Kravitz, City Planning Director. The Engineering Department did in fact review the application again and acquiesced to having to reserve the utility easement because of the unique nature of this application. So, there's no issue with the city going forward.
Thank you. Any further questions for the, for the planner from the committee? From the council? As to this item, Solicitor, would we need a comment from the public?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, members of the public on this item?
So, if the committee would indulge, the recommended amendment would be to, on PCO 5-25, it would be deleting number 6 and renumbering the balance of the resolution.
Thank you. So moved. Do I have a second? Second, Councilman Foley. Thank you. Okay, any further questions, members of the committee? Further questions, members of the council? Further questions or comments, members of the public? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any further amendments? Very good. Okay. For us to try to keep this clean, we are back on clean-ish. We are back on the main action.
Amendment passed, but if you couldn't have the committee move favorable action as amended?
Thank you. I would request if Councilman Kirby may indulge us, a motion for favorable action as amended. And I would request Councilman DeLuise, if he may second it? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. With any luck, that'll keep the minutes slightly simpler. Okay, so unless there are any other amendments, I suppose, any reconsiderations, we'll move on to item 3. on to item three on the agenda. Hopefully, a little quicker on this one. Item number three, PCR 48-25, a resolution in observance of National Military Appreciation Month. I had introduced this item. Let's see, I'll recommend favorable action. Thank you. Any comments, questions, members of the committee? Members of the council? Questions, comments, members of the public? So, I'll just speak very briefly on this. This is another Heritage and History Month that had been recognized by the United States Department of State through a certain point of time in February of this year. It was initially championed by the great Senator McCain, and it recognized by Congress in 1999. I think that in the spirit of inclusiveness and making sure to recognize these Heritage and History Months here at the Warwick City Council level, and otherwise let all people know that everyone is welcome to come to these city council meetings, and in the interest of diversity and inclusion, I'm requesting favorable action. So, with that said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, item number four, PCR 49-25, a resolution in observance of Jewish-American Heritage Month. So, I also introduced this and am requesting favorable action. First, I'll make the motion for favorable action. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions, comments, members of the committee? Questions, comments, members of the council? Questions, comments, members of the public? All right, I'll very briefly state that I think it's important, for the same reasons as continuing to, excuse me, to continue to recognize National Military Awareness Month, that, or excuse me, National Military Appreciation Month, that we also continue to recognize Jewish-American Heritage Month. Specifically, this Heritage Month has been recognized by the U.S. State Department since the presidency of George W. Bush in 2006. I won't repeat what I said the last time around. I understand that there are multiple Heritage Appreciation and Awareness Months for the month of May. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The ayes have it, four to zero. And finally, fifth on the agenda, PCR 50-25, a resolution in observance of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I also introduced and recommend favorable action on this item. First, I'll make the motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions, comments, members of the council? Questions, comments, or excuse me, questions, comments, members of the committee? Questions, comments, members of the council? Questions, comments, members of the public? So, without repeating myself too much on this, AAPI, or its predecessors, AANHPI Heritage Month, in its modern form, in its original form, it was first recognized federally and by the U.S. State Department under the presidency of George H.W. Bush. And for the same reasons as the other two Heritage and History Months recognized during the month of May, I request that the city council continue to recognize Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, to affirm that this city council values inclusivity and inclusion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, four to zero. There being no further business of this committee, this committee adjourns at 8:32 PM.
Public Safety Committee may now convene.
Public Safety Committee has called the order at 8:33. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the committee meeting held on April 7th?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Kirby seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Three yes, let the record indicate that Councilman Muto is absent this evening. The resolution to claims, relative to claims, I will defer that to counsel solicitor for comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the council is aware, and members of the public have paid attention over the prior few months, we adopted a new process for the administration of claims. So, the item before us is actually a relic of the old system, so it is, it would be in order to entertain a motion to withdraw this item, as those claims are being independently reviewed under the new recommendation and appeal process.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. I'd make a motion to withdraw based upon your comments.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. PCR 54-25, a resolution in regards to authorizing the enforcement of the stop signs at Fashion Drive where it intersects with Imperial Drive. Council President Sinapi.
So, this is just to formalize a stop sign that already exists. Apparently, it came into effect where it was placed there with Bob's approval before it was a thing for city council to actually hear these matters. So, once it was discovered, they requested we formalize it, so here we are. Request favorable action.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions from members of the committee? Any questions from members of the council? Any questions from members of the public? Do we have any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion of favorable action, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record indicate it passes, and the committee is adjourned at 8:36.
So, the full, the full city council will reconvene at 8:37 PM. First up, we have acceptance of minutes from council meeting held on April 21st, 2025. Is motion made by Councilman Lattiser to accept the minutes? Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Gebhardt. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
All opposed? Any in favor, Councilman Muto absent? The minutes are so approved, unless the solicitor yells at me, which he hasn't. Next, we have appointments requiring confirmation. First up is Historical Cemeteries Commission. We have Mark Brown.
Mr. President, out of an abundance of caution, we ended up holding these on the intergovernmental agenda. The Historical Cemeteries Commission was not properly noticed, so as I said, as out of abundance of caution, these were held until June 2nd.
All right, is there any objection to this being held till June 2nd? Seeing none, so held. And given that this is the case for all of these, that's Lisa Corcom, the Honorable Francis X Flaherty, and one Alan Golder, is there any objection to each of these matters being held till June 2nd in accordance with the basis that Councilman Gebhardt just stated?
No.
Seeing none, these matters are all held till June 2nd. Next, we have the consent calendar. First up is PCR 55-25, resolution relative to bids, this is Councilman Lattiser. For action, Councilman Lattiser?
Move favorable action on PCR 55-25.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Lattiser and seconded by Councilman Napa. Councilman Lattiser?
First item, item number three, 2026-018 Bravo, fire apparatus repairs. 2026-022, sand and gravel. 2026-021A, spring repairs and related. 2026-021 Bravo, spring repairs and related work. 2026-024, hydraulic parts and repairs. 2028, January, 2026-020, janitorial cleaning and supplies. 2026-031, Cruscent Software. 2025-465, Purchase Field Pro. 2025-422, firefighting vessel. 2026, tree removal. That was 2026-035, sorry. 2026-026, animal shelter food. 2025-463, security cameras for Department of Public Works. 2026-023, high density. 2026-019, power wash. 2025-464, furnish and install card reader. 2025-448, gym equipment. 2025-467, replacement covers. 2025-196, sweeper brooms. 2021, engineering and survey. That completes it. With the exception of several PCRs.
All right, so can we do a vote on the consent calendar first? Is there any further discussion on such?
Just as a point of order, if the chairman identified one of the items in here as a, that was a removal for a PCR, does that have any effect?
Which one was that, Councilman?
The Purchase Field Pro, we removed that because there was amendment to the amount we, I think we believe we assigned a PCR to that, I just don't want to.
I think I, I think I like canceled that, but, no, that's not part of it, that's PCR 59-25. If I identified it had in the bid package, that was an error.
Okay.
Okay.
Disagreed.
Just for the record, there were four items removed from the consent calendar. These four items will be voted separately thereafter. Bid 2026-018A is now PCR 57-25. Bid 2025-419 is now PCR 58-25. Bid 2025-465 is now PCR 59-25, and bid 2025-466 is now PCR 60-25. Those four items are not on the consent calendar, which has been moved and seconded and can be voted.
Thank you for that.
All right, so clerk will call the roll regarding the consent calendar.
Mr. Sinapi?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Rix?
Yes.
Eight yes, consent passes.
All right, next, we'll do the items that were removed from the consent calendar. Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you. It will be item 2026, formerly item 2026-018A, which is now become PCR 57-25, fire apparatus Recommendation was favorable action.
All right, for action, Councilman Lattiser?
Move favorable action on PCR 57-25.
Seconded by Councilman Foley. All right, for discussion, is there any discussion on this item?
For the record, the committee had recommended favorable action. There were two yes and one no. I was the no.
Then this makes sense, all right. Seeing no, some discussion? Councilman Napa?
One comment on this item. I completely agree with Councilman Lattiser's discussion and assertions on this, that the bid should have been cleaned up to include actual price lists. The only reason that I would vote in favor for favorable action is because the city only requested the percentage reduction, and I think we got, we did a sufficient job getting the point across that that was not really the acceptable practice and not the expectation moving forward. But otherwise, I agree completely with Councilman Lattiser's expectation on the bids moving forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Sinapi?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise? Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
No.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Rix?
No.
Suggest two no, motion passes.
All right, Councilman Lattiser, the next one?
Next item is formerly bid 2025-419, it now is PCR 58-25, food truck services. The committee recommendation was favorable, two in the affirmative and one no. I was the no.
All right, Councilman Lattiser, for action?
Move favorable action on PCR 58-25.
Seconded by Councilman Foley. Is there any discussion on this?
Councilman Foley, could you repeat that, please?
Councilman Gebhardt?
I'll just say, I didn't participate in the, I didn't participate actively in the discussion in the committee, however, have received a number of calls on this that are critical of the, of the process. And so, while I think the process could be improved in future, given that we have several events lined up, and members of the public, I think it would be a harm to members of the public to not have concessions at those events, and I think failure to approve this might, might create an absence. So, I do think that it would be a good idea for this, but we let this go by last year, and we had questions, the, when it came back several years before, it's, it's, this always seems to be a sticky, sticky item, and it may be something that we want to engage in a public process, to get folks here to hammer out some sort of kind of equitable distribution of the assets that the city has available, make sure we maximize, you know, the city's revenue share on providing access to these assets, but also be fair, and quite frankly, preferential to Warwick businesses who want to operate in the kind of mobile, in the mobile mode that, you know, food trucks and mobile concessions afford them. So, I'll support this tonight, but I do think that we should come back and revisit this. Thank you.
Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, there was heavy discussion on this at the committee meeting. I opposed it then, I oppose it now. To concur with Councilman Gebhardt, I have objected to this process, I objected to the previous process. I think this is flawed, this is something that absolutely needs to be revisited, I think it's unfair. I think it's unfair and it is taking away too much control and responsibility and authority from the administration. People in the administration or send it over to us need to be accountable and responsible for those vendor appointments and location assignments. Haven't changed my mind and I've never feared to be alone in the foxhole, so I will be voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with my colleagues on this. I would, I would also echo Councilman Gebhardt that this seems to be an issue every single year. Something with this come, or this or similar bids comes in front of us and something is half-baked. However, where I would disagree potentially with one of my colleagues is the consequences of us not approving this. Really, the consequence of us not approving this is that as to any events that can't come back to us for rebid, I believe that based on what's happened in previous years, it simply becomes a free-for-all for any food trucks or other vendors who are otherwise property licensed and by the state, by the city, and so forth, then they can effectively go to these different events. I imagine that the city can, of course, on city land, direct them where they can and can't park, of course, but, or direct them that they can't even park at all. However, ultimately, it's something where the residents of the city of Warwick may ultimately wind up getting more food choices, not fewer. And if food trucks choose not to attend due to not having the exclusive rights, then really that's a matter of their choice in the matter. So while I think that the city made a process here that is at least rational, I think that we really could have done a lot better. We could have gotten this process started a lot earlier to work out some of these kinks. And so I'm divided on whether or not it makes sense here to simply allow this process to move forward as, as it is in an imperfect manner, or send a message here, let's start this over, let's not, oh, go ahead and just approve something in its current state like this and go ahead and see what happens, allow more vendors to go ahead and show up to these events in the meantime. People are still going to have options, I'm sure. That's all for now, thank you.
Councilman Foley?
Yes, thank you. First, I know Councilman Muto, who is not here, but I've been in contact with, spent a large amount of time since being sworn in, reaching out to vendors, trying to have conversations to do what my colleagues have asked, to get the process better. And as of right now, the only solution is the one that's in front of us. That's A. B, we spent an hour earlier tonight in committee discussing this almost ad nauseam, I'm sorry, but I'm calling the question.
So Councilman Foley, would you be so kind as to let Councilman DeLuise speak first, given that he had his light on and he hadn't previously spoken? Thank you.
I just wanted to say, a few years ago, I attended an event that was held at Rocky Point and there were about three... Yeah, nothing works in this building. Why don't we spend some money on acoustics? So I was there with some people that I, that worked for me at the time and I thought it was amazing. It was, you know, all these different food trucks in one particular area of Rocky Point. And it was the first time that I had tried bison stew. So I'm with Councilman Lattiser on this. I'm with the Dells Lemonade guy. So I don't think this is a good, it's a good fit right now.
All right, Councilman Foley has called the question, so clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
I'm sorry, what, I was confused. What, what are we calling the roll on?
So Councilman Foley has called the question on the motion for favorable action. So it's for approving the bid?
Mr. Foley? Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Lattisah?
No.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
All right, motion for favorable action fails. Do we have any other motions regarding this item? Councilman Lattiser?
I'll make a motion to send this back out for a rebid.
I don't even know if that's a motion we can do. You mean you want unfavorable action?
Got it. Make a motion for unfavorable action. Thank you.
Motion made for unfavorable action, is there a second? Councilman Ricks?
A point of order, would a motion for unfavorable action, if it similarly resulted in a four-four vote, result in approval?
That's an excellent question. Council Solicitor?
All ties fail.
I'll withdraw my motion. Four-four, it fails. Thank you.
Request by Councilman Foley to hold till June 2nd, is there a second? Councilman Ricks, seconds. Any further discussion on the motion to hold? Is that what you're going for here? All right, Councilman Lattiser?
No, a question. So we just voted on this four-four, so that means this item failed. I don't understand.
The motion failed.
The motion failed, okay. And the motion now is to do what?
Request by Councilman Foley to hold till June 2nd, which was seconded by Councilman Ricks.
Okay.
So now we're on discussion of that motion.
Thank you. So for discussion through the chair of Councilman Foley, what would be your hope or desire for holding this?
My hope, my hope will be that Mr. Muto will be out of urgent care, feeling better, and able to cast a deciding vote one way or another.
That's a fair point.
Fair enough.
Any other comments or questions on the motion to hold? All right, seeing none, clerk will call the roll, please.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes to hold.
All right, next one, Councilman Lattiser?
Next item is formerly 2025-465. It is now PCR 59-25 with an amendment.
All right, for action, Councilman Lattiser?
Favorable action on PCR 59-25 with the amendment.
Is there a second? Councilman Gebhardt, and so first things first, probably handle the amendment first. Councilman Lattiser?
The amendment at the request of the department head would be to amend the monetary amount and reduce it from $43,183.2 to the new request of $41,243.8. And that was favorable action.
Eight cents or eighty cents?
I had written down eighty, but...
You have eighty? Okay, I have...
I had eight, I had zero eight.
I had zero eight as well.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Gebhardt. Any just further discussion on the amendment? Clerk will call the roll on the amendment?
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Nine yes to amend.
All right, now it stands before us.
Eight yes, I apologize.
Now it stands before us as amended. Do we have?
Move favorable action as amended.
Motion made and seconded as amended. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes as amended.
All right, last one, Councilman Lattiser?
Last item, formerly 2025-466 Purchase of Infield Mix. It now is PCR 60-25. That also has an amendment.
All right, so for amendment, Councilman Lattiser?
Move favorable action as amended.
Second. Move favorable action to amend, which was seconded. Any questions or comments on the amendment?
Just put the amount on the record. It was previously $8,496.39. It has been requested by the department head to increase that to $10,446.87.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll on the proposed amendment? Or to amend, rather?
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes to amend.
All right, so now this stands before us as amended. Councilman Lattiser?
Move favorable action as amended.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any questions or comments on this as amended? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll, please.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes as amended.
We have made it to unfinished business. First things first, we have PCO 5-25. An order on the abandonment of a portion of Harper Street, John Harold, Barbara Harold, Karen Harold, Bruce Moore, Mary Moore, Nancy Stockard, and Jason Stockard petitioners. This is second passage with a twist. Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion to amend this agenda as well? I suppose.
Yeah, Mr. President, before we get into the recommendation, if the council would similarly amend the agenda to change the word "second" to be "first."
So moved. Motion made, is there a second? There's the second. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Any objections to amending the agenda as so proffered?
No.
Seeing none, so amended. So now this stands before us, it's first passage. Councilman Ricks?
Recommend favorable action.
All right, so Councilman Ricks, my understanding is that there's going to be an amendment to this?
Correct. Committee moved the amendment to so, let's see, unless the city councillor, city council solicitor corrects me otherwise, I believe that it would be appropriate for us to move favorable action first passage as amended.
Let's do the amendment on the floor. The amendment, if someone would move and second it, is to delete the Order Number Six that was relative to the requirement of a perpetual easement. So the amendment would be to delete the easement requirement number six.
So moved. Second. Motion made and seconded. Are there any questions on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll. Favorable action to amend.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes to amend.
All right, now this stands before us as amended. Councilman Ricks?
Recommend favorable action as amended.
For action, Councilman Kirby?
Yes.
That sounds like a request for favorable action. Second. And there's the second. Any questions or comments on Councilman Kirby's motion for favorable action? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, first passage as amended.
Next, we have PCO 7-25 Sub A. Order on the abandonment of a portion of Old Quaker Lane Colby Enterprises LLC petitioner. This would be second passage. Councilman Ricks?
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gebhardt?
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Lattisah?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, second passage.
Next is PCO 9-25 Sub A. An ordinance amending the fire department composition, age requirements for applicants, superintendent of fire alarms, mandatory retirement ages, and definitions. This would be second passage, ordinance?
Committee recommends favorable action on this PCO.
Mr. President, another cleanup matter, if the council would so amend the agenda to delete the reference to unanimous consent. This item was done under unanimous consent in the first passage, but the council undertook this under the ordinance committee this evening on second passage, so just deleting unanimous consent reference from the agenda.
Anyone would like to make that motion?
Motion to delete unanimous consent from the agenda.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Napa, seconded by Councilman Gebhardt, Councilman Lattiser. Any, well, any objection to unanimous consent being deleted from the agenda in reference to PCO 9-25? Seeing none, so ordered. Now this stands before us still, so Councilman Napa?
Motion to move favorable action.
Any, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gebhardt. Are there any questions or comments on the bill? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll. Yes.
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 Next is PCR 45-25. Resolution requesting the General Assembly to amend RIGL 44-5-67.2 regarding property tax classification for the city of Warwick to better stabilize property tax payments. This is intergovernmental. Committee recommends favorable action. Recommendation for favorable action?
Second.
We need a motion for favorable action. I heard a so moved, and then I heard a second from Councilman Gebhardt. And my understanding, Councilman Gebhardt, is that there will be an amendment?
That, that is correct. An amendment was made in committee. I think we were all here for the discussion, but essentially it strikes, it strikes all the blue text and picks back up before the next section. Sorry, I don't have it directly in front of me here at this second.
It strikes after the semicolon in line 12 through the blue text and ends at the end of the blue text, the strikeup.
Correct lines from the midpoint of line 12 through the end of line 22.
Councilman Snappy moves an amendment that adds an "and" after the semicolon on line 11 and deletes the clause on lines 12 to 14 that read and provided further that for each year, Class 1 property tax rates shall not be less than 57% of Class 2 property tax rates. It also deletes the originally proposed new language in blue that follows that clause.
All right. So there was a motion and a second. So are there any other further questions on the request to amend? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes to amend.
All right. So now this stands before us as amended. Councilman Gephardt?
Councilman Snappy, would you like to move it? Motion to move favorable as amended.
Motion made, seconded by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes as amended.
Next, we have PCR-46-25, resolution relative to claims. This is committee report, public safety. And who chaired that?
Yeah. So...
Councilman Lattiser?
I have to defer to the city clerk because I gave him my paper.
All right. My understanding is that there was a recommendation to withdraw.
Yeah. That's what I recollect as well. Motion to withdraw.
Seconded by Councilman Foley. Are there any questions or comments on the motion to withdraw? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes to withdraw.
On to new business. PCO-11-25, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the southerly side of Staples Avenue from the intersection of Midley Avenue, southeastern eastward to 70th Staples Avenue.
Committee recommended favorable action.
For action, Councilman Snappy?
Motion to move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Snappy, seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, first passage.
Next, we have PCR-48-25, a resolution in observance of National Military Appreciation Month. Councilman Ricks?
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Ricks?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gephardt, Councilman Foley. Are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next, we have PCR-49-25, a resolution in observance of Jewish-American Heritage Month. This is Public Properties, Councilman Ricks?
Recommend favorable action.
Recommendation for action, Councilman Ricks for action?
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Foley. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next, we have PCR-50-25, a resolution in observance of Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This is Public Properties, Councilman Ricks?
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Ricks?
Move favorable action.
Seconded by Councilman Foley, Councilman Gephardt. Any further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next, we have PCR-52-25, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to support constitutional rights to bear arms and oppose the Rhode Island Assault Weapons Ban Act of 2025, H-5346 and S-359. However, it appears to be in... Okay, yep, that gives me all the confirmation I need.
Would the council entertain unanimous consent to amend the agenda to correct the House Bill reference number from 5346 to 5436?
Is there any objection to making said amendment to the title in the agenda? Seeing none, so ordered? So now this stands before us. This is intergovernmental. Councilman Gephardt?
The committee recommends holding this to our meeting on June 2nd.
Is there any objection to holding this till June 2nd? Seeing none, so ordered? Next, we have PCR-54-25, a resolution in regards to authorizing enforcement to stop signs on Fashion Drive where it intersects Imperial Drive. This is public safety.
We have favorable action on PCR-54-25. Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Lattiser?
Move favorable action on PCR-54-25.
Seconded by Councilman Gephardt. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next, we have PCR-56-25, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to support H-5393 and S-57. Why are there only two numbers? Is it S-57? Legislation requiring the state to maintain sidewalks along state highways. This is for me, under unanimous consent. First things first, is there any objection to considering this under unanimous consent? All right. Seeing none. This was requested at the behest of Representative Bennett and... I think you're correct. I believe the League of City and Towns as well. As you can imagine, based on the title, the goal is to require the state to maintain sidewalks along state highways. For those who have been here for any amount of time, and probably for the new people, you're all well aware that this is a surprisingly contentious but more so confusing issue because often the state will say, "We're not responsible for X, Y, Z." The city will respond in kind the same way, and it just becomes an interesting matter for everyone where nothing gets done.[1451.83]